All right, good morning. This is Wednesday, September 8th, and we are going to start off our meeting. And matter of fact, we're going to start off with the Pledge Allegiance. And I would love for, we have a birthday boy in the house, I believe. Is he here, Lance Fredo? To lead us in the pledge. Good morning. See, he didn't know that we were going to call him out. He hates it. He's already getting red. Look at him. Right.
... to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands on its own individual and sovereign justice.
All right, good job. Happy birthday, Lance. All right. Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask you to call the role. I'm also going to let council know. I'm going to stay really strict on today's guidelines with time. Because I know we have council members later on that need to, they have times they've got to be at. So I just want to make sure that we're going to stay right on track. I want to let everyone know that. So if I cut you off, it's for time. Okay. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
All right, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Breckus.
I'm here.
Doerr.
Here.
Delgado.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Mayor Sheehy.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
Okay, thank you.
Our first item today is public comment. It should be noted for those in the audience that public comment are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the council's agenda. Please note that council may not take action upon any matter not agendized for possible action on today's agenda. When you are called for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Warnings will be issued by the presiding officer if there is a disruptive behavior, and you will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues. Our first public commenter today is Chaplain Love, AKA Levon Reed, followed by John Locke, followed by Kai Plaskin.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, and good morning Reno Council. First, I'd like to state that I came a month ago, and you were here. You weren't here in present because you were negotiating for the bus transit situation in private. So I thank you for that. But I'm here again today to argue and complain about the bus situation. It's gone amok. Since you got the truths, the problem is now I think RTC is taking Kilos and letting them do the dirty work to get rid of the bus drivers. Because since that meeting, that meeting happened, there was 43 people. You lost bus drivers. Now it's almost up to 61. And they're dropping like flies. And of RTC, Ms. Jordan's group, she's the chairman. She acts like she doesn't know what's going on. It's kind of ridiculous because her head guy, that group needs to be either addressed by you, Mayor. You need to talk to the Gary Watson from the team minister group, and you need to talk to him in private and find out why Kilos is not doing their part, why RTC is not doing their part. It seems like they want to run off the bus drivers, not treat them right. And I think from the union's demands, they're not unreasonable. They should have two 15-minute breaks. They should have a half-hour break and an eight-hour period. And I do think that they should not have to be worried about cutting their health program. If they don't get less than 40 hours, they don't get their medical. And that does not seem fair. To drop the bus drivers and not care about what's happening to them, it's getting chaotic. Today, I waited almost an hour and 30 minutes just to get from El Rancho downtown. And in the last four days, it was ridiculous. Everywhere I went, I was waiting for two hours, two and a half hours. The bus drivers are getting very upset. They have to deal with ridiculous people because people don't want to wear their mask. They don't want to pay. And I mean, if I was a bus driver, I would quit. I would not take half the nonsense I deal with people on these buses. And so I asked, in the case of maybe, Mayor, you can take Oscar Delgado and one of your other members and go find out what's going on with RTC in the background. Go find out what's going on with Kilos in the background. And then give Gary Watson 30 minutes in private so you could go find out really what's going on. Because they don't need another strike. And I know come the 8th or the 9th, and the 9th, 10th, 11th, they're going to do negotiations. But if that doesn't materialize, this poor bus drivers are going to keep dropping like flies. And we need to do something. They deserve to be treated better. So, thank you, Mayor. And I thank you for the Zoom the other day. But I ask you, reserve that if we need it after the 11th in private. You're wasting my time because I work graveyard, and I need my sleep. So it's for me to keep coming to these meetings as I think it's important.
All right, thank you.
John Locke, followed by Kai Plaskin, followed by Matt Manser.
Good morning. My name is John Locke. I'm a driver for Ride. What is going on is Keolis can't even run a Sunday schedule on a Sunday. The 29th, which was a Sunday, not this last Sunday, but the Sunday before, they parked seven buses. That's $250,000 that they should be fined. And they're not. The RTC board is washing their hands, saying, oh, we don't need to do it. They're doing a good job. They're not doing a good job. They're destroying our bus system. It's a disgrace to Reno, my hometown, my home state. I don't know of any company worse than Keolis so far. We thought MV was bad? Oh, no. MV didn't park half as many buses. If you take the amount of buses that they park, and you take the amount of people that can't ride the system, these are voters that can't get from point A to point B in a safe and timely manner. Because there's no buses. And RTC is bending over backwards, cutting routes to accommodate a French foreign country. They're paying, basically, a foreign country to destroy our bus system. That is wrong. That is disgraceful. I'm ashamed to be in Reno. I'm ashamed to say I'm a bus driver. I love my job. It's an easy job. If I'm allowed to do it. Keolis goes through drivers faster than I can go through a tank of gas. In just two weeks, we lost 27 people. They were just hired. They go out, they find out what Keolis is about, and they say, oh, no, we're out of here. This has to stop. This is a great city to live in. The bus system is necessary for people to get back and forth to work. And if RTC can't see that, then they need to open their eyes and maybe go out and try and ride a bus. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Kai Plaskin, followed by Matt Manser, followed by Terry Brooks.
Hi, I'm Kai Plaskin with the Truckee Meadows Bicycle Alliance. It's my birthday, too. So thank you.
Hi, Kai, happy birthday.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I think I'm 48.
You're 20.
I think. Hopefully, I don't look it.
Good to see you.
Good to see you, too. You want to sing me "Happy Birthday"? I'm just kidding. Just kidding.
No, you don't want to hear.
Again, I'm with the Truckee Meadows Bicycle Alliance. I'm here to talk about the Center Street Cycle Track. And it's safe to say that I think everybody in this room has this vision of a healthy and safe downtown Reno that reduces greenhouse gases and traffic and solves parking problems. And it's important that we don't take our eye off of that ball of a healthy, safe downtown Reno. And so for more than three years, we've all been working on this vision, right? Through the Center Street Cycle Track Project represents that visionary and all those visionary elements. It's a protected path that would run from the university to midtown. And so families and tourists can all travel safely, which they can't do currently on Virginia Street. It's very, very dangerous. And I'll talk about that later if I have an opportunity to. But the bike path, you know, there's been some things that have been distracting us from this vision lately. One is that the city of Reno staff have added about $10 million of street improvements to this Bike Path project. It would cost about $5 million. And now it's supposed to be up to $13 million because of street improvements. And now we want to spend $150,000 of Center Street Bike Path money and taxpayer money to study Virginia Street and put the Bike Path over there instead, possibly? That was already studied in 2019. It won't work. And the engineering studies already showed us that. So now there's a pause on Center Street because of this Item D1, the placemaking study. We oppose that. And why is this pause put on suddenly? Why is this study being done suddenly? It's because one business owner downtown wants that money to put it in front of their business, the casinos. We don't really think that's appropriate. And frankly, it's embarrassing for a vision of a healthier and safer downtown Reno that we all want. Now, putting this flagship bike facility to show the world that Reno is committed to keeping children and families and tourists and students safe, reduce traffic and parking problems and greenhouse gases all at the same time. It shouldn't be that hard to do this. It should be done nice and quickly. You need to send a message to the city staff, to RTC and the casinos to stop distractions on this vision and continue with the Center Street Cycle Track and take action to complete this collective vision of a safer and healthier downtown. Please oppose Item D1. We have a vision. We need to keep moving forward, not backward, which we'll be doing with Item D1 if you approve it. Thank you.
Thanks, Kai. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Matt Manser, followed by Terry Brooks, followed by Thomas Albright.
Hi, my name is Matt Manser. I'm a, I work for USA Cycling. And I've also had my cycling consultant business for over 30 years. Want to talk to you about D1 and the RTC Bike Lane Project. If you've been down Virginia Street recently...
Sir, you're going to have to raise your mask.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you so much.
Hard for me to talk.
Understand.
If you've been down Virginia Street recently, after their improvements, you've seen they put that concrete barrier down the center, which has consequently made it unsafe for bike riders to ride up and down through the midtown area. It's also made it unsafe for pedestrians because they're like coming out from behind cars, out into traffic. They can't see the traffic coming. And the cars can't see the people standing on the side of the road. So they have no choice but to run right into them because they can't move to the left to get around them. They've also made a debacle of the university as well with their new bus lanes up there. I've noticed that Highway 80 traffic is being backed up around rush hour, and it all leads to a bottleneck there at the university with their new bus lanes. Notice they don't have any bike lanes in there. They have these giant lanes for these buses, and their drivers are on strike, seems like, as well.
Sir, would you please adjust your mask up a little?
Oh, I'm sorry. Keep falling. Let's see. According to the, and also this gentleman here, the Reno Reserve reports that this Center Street Bike Lane is going to cost upwards of $13 million. So I wanted to do the math on that real quick. So say there were a million people that use that over the next 20 years. Say a million people use that. That'd be $13 a trip per rider to go 1.4 miles. But I don't think it's going to be a million people using that thing over the next 20 years. My estimate on the high side would be 100,000 people use it over the next 20 years. So that works out to $130 every time you saw a bike using that green painted section. In my opinion, RTC has too much money. I've spoken to them. They say they get these massive payouts from the state, and they have to use the money, and they can't give it back. Please don't give them any more money for any more projects. I ask you to please stop this project. It's not feasible. I've looked at the plans. It's not even going to work. And I'm asking you to go through and not give them any more money and kill this project for good, for the good of the cycling community. And the people can use that money for other projects that benefit everyone as a whole. Thank you.
Terry Brooks, followed by Thomas Albright, followed by Mark Markell.
Hi, Terry.
Good morning. Good morning. It's me, Terry Brooks, again. And today, I'd like to address the problem of unemployment as related to homelessness. When the coronavirus came, it caused a lot of people to be unemployed. And many of them became homeless and felt like their lives were being destroyed. Being unemployed can cause a person to be homeless. And then it's harder to be re-employed again if you are still homeless. And if becoming unemployed, you lost your means of transportation and lack means of getting to work, how can you get an occupation? Each person seems to lead, each problem seems to lead to another. So when you're in a homeless situation, it will probably lead you to finding yourself in a hopeless situation. When you find yourself homeless, it's as if you have to start from scratch. And you have to find new factors to life with which you can reattach. Being unemployed and homeless can kind of get you off track. So as far as looking for a job, you might be reluctant to go back. Then if you are offered back the job that you once had, you might be too embarrassed to go back because of the problems you've had. After being homeless for a while because you're unemployed, going back to work might be something you want to avoid. If you're homeless and hungry, and you're getting poor nutrition, that could cause you to lose any kind of ambition. And if you have been lowered into a state of depression, you are probably in no mood to seek an occupation. And then the longer that you stay unemployed, then the less likely you are to get re-employed. And if you are offered a job, but your answer is no, then your problem of homelessness is only going to grow. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today. And I look forward to coming back when I have even more to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Terry.
Thomas Albright, followed by Terry Brooks. Oh, I'm sorry, followed by Mark Markell.
Good morning. I'm Tom Albright. Good morning to the council members and Mayor Sheehy, everybody else. I moved here with my family to Reno about 11 years ago. And frankly, I feel like, felt like I won the lottery to get the privilege to live here, already having lived in one of the great cities of the United States, in Madison, Wisconsin. The one area where I really struggled and felt like we had to take a big step back as a family is we could no longer rely on the bus system and biking to get around for our needs. And in particular, I'm focusing on Item D1 today. Reno currently is not reaching its potential as a city for safety and mobility of families, children, so-called invisible cyclists who maybe aren't able to come to these meetings, don't have some of the economic privileges, they ride old bikes, people who wear Lycra, you know? The Lycra-wearing members among us, okay? We know who we are. So it really spans a broad spectrum of people. And Reno's cycling infrastructure is really needing to catch up. And I think one of the greatest pieces that we can do for that is to improve connectivity and safety in the downtown area, particularly looking at all the expansion and activity and linking the university to the city. So because of this, I'd like to echo some of the sentiments expressed by Kai Plaskin that we need to stop additional studies looking at Virginia Street. And I would ask you to accelerate progress on the Center Street Cycle Track as a way to improve safety and save some taxpayer money by avoiding an unnecessary study. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Our final public commenter is Mark Markell.
Cory, will you help Mark?
Thank you. Hi, Cory. Thank you, Mark.
Hi, Mark.
Hi, Madam Mayor, Ms. Mayor. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Pretty good.
Good. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. Okay. Good morning, Ms. Mayor, and city council members and city manager. My name is Mark Markell, and I'm a concerned resident. I was, when I was 24, I got a drunk driving class. I got a car as a drunk driver. But I was drunk also. But we were doing 100. And we rolled eight times. And I was ejected and landed on my head, putting me in a coma for a month, in the hospital for six and a half months. And I'm here today to warn people and show people what could happen if you get in a car as a drunk driver. And please, I'm sorry. It's hard to talk with this mask. But anyways, I just want to show people and warn people what could happen when you drive with a drunk driver. Please, don't drink and drive and don't get in a car as a drunk driver. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Great message.
All right, Madam Mayor. It should be noted for the record, we received four letters of support and 20 in concern of various topics from Barry Fisher, Adriana Marin Herrera, Henry Schaefer, Deborah Kane Strini, Nick Newson, Angela Segwin, Bob Tregless, Kim Dieter, Susan Ruch, Edwin Jordan, Claudine Wharton, Margarita Johnson, Marcy Delatorre, Justina Yellowhair, John Edmondo, Jan Cronister, Desiree Likes, Eric Hatzenberger, Amy Beckowich, Kit Miller, John White, Shirley Folkins-Roberts on behalf of Northern Nevada Children's Cancer Foundation, Reina Wood Hemenez. And we do have one voicemail to be played. A record of those have been saved into Reno.gov.
Oh, great. Thank you.
My name is Allison McGill. My phone number is 775-870-7674. This message is for the city council. Those people living in Paradise Park are scary. And their trash is all over. They've broken into the community garden shed and stolen stuff. And yesterday, I was walking with my little dog, 11 pounds. And all of a sudden, behind me, I heard "crack." Scared me. Scared my dog. And it was some guy with a whip. Bothered him not at all. He just kept right on walking. Could not have cared less. I really wish those people were not there.
All right, Madam Mayor. With that, we have no further public comment, and we're moving on to Item A4.
All right, thank you so much. Before we do that, I'm actually going to send it to our city manager, Dr. Hornley, for any updates or changes to the agenda.
No updates or changes today, Madam Mayor. Thanks very much.
All right, thank you so much. Okay. Moving right along. Item A4, can we get approval of the agenda? Can I get a motion?
So move.
A motion and a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Consent agenda. And I'm going to start with Vice Mayor Weber to pull any items off the consent agenda, please.
I do not.
Okay. Councilwoman Doerr.
Yes, I'd like to pull Item B6, please.
All right. Councilwoman Jordan.
Nothing. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Delgado.
Nothing, ma'am.
Councilwoman Reese.
No, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Breckus.
None.
All right. Thank you. At this time.
Oh, Madam Mayor, we do have public commenters in the audience before we make a motion.
Okay, thank you. Going right ahead.
Our first public commenter is Jana Hoffeditz, followed by Fana Thompson, followed by Grace Potory.
Hi. Good morning. I'm just going to fix it a little bit. Thanks. First of all, I want to thank you all for being here to consider a resolution to ban wildlife contests. And my name is Jana Hoffeditz. I live in Palomino Valley, which is on the way to Pyramid Lake. I live on 40 acres off grid. I've lived in nature my whole life. And my family comes from a ranching family in Montana prior. So I've been around wildlife a lot. And the comment I really wanted to make today, I'm not going to take up the whole time. We have documented these, me and a couple other of the people here. We've gone out. We've taken photos. We know what happens. It's not pretty, as you all know, these contests. And if you ever wanted more information from me about questions, about how they're done, we definitely know. And I'm just asking you all today to pass this resolution. And thank you all very much.
All right, thank you.
Fana Tomlinson, followed by Grace Potry, followed by Toby Tyler.
Good morning, city council. Thanks for bringing this resolution, Naomi and Devin, to the forefront. It's, we hope that you pass, and we're in support of it. I'm Fana Tomlinson. I live in Reno Ward 2. I'm also the Reno Tahoe rep for Project Coyote. I'm grateful that it's also in the honor of Norm Harry. He showed up to a couple of our protests. It was great to see his passion for Nevada Wild Ones. So let's talk what's at stake. I am a current Nevada Fish and Hunting License holder. So the indiscriminate killing en masse serves neither conservation nor science, nor does it help the image of hunting. And that's what's at stake. Not one state department, including Endow, I've been working with Tony Wasley, recognizes wildlife killing contests as a viable management tool. And I think that in itself is very important. Do you want this to be the face of hunting? Because this is what the public sees, Because this is what the public sees and this is what the public will focus on. I have to think about the future generations. I shared with you a brochure from Project Coyote. We worked for 15 years spreading coexistence message throughout the United States. We have reps everywhere. I work with Endow to give, co-sponsor webinars now because they're not in person about how to coexist with coyotes. So we believe that killing is not the answer, that coexisting is the answer. And I hope you vote yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fana, thank you for your advocacy. I appreciate it. And it's not an easy conversation at times to have, but you've been very graceful in having it. So thank you.
Grace Potry, followed by Toby Tyler, followed by Rex Floness.
Good morning. My name is Grace Potry. I live in Stead, but I'm real close to Lemon Valley. I'm one of the people in this room that was blessed since 1992 to be the friend of Norm Harry. He was a mentor to me and an inspiration to all Nevadans who care about our Mother Earth. He was an amazing man. I miss him every day, every day. Norm taught us through his songs and his prayers that the coyote is a sacred animal to the indigenous people of this country. I love the coyotes. We hear the coyotes out in Stead. They're fun. We go out and we take pictures of the coyotes in Stead and Lemon Valley. And I'll have to show you this picture. This was taken before all the development out in Lemon Valley on the corner of Military Drive and Lemon Drive. It was a coyote. It was a cold snowy day. And my husband and I had been out watching the coyotes for so long that we'd actually developed a relationship where they weren't so afraid of us. They're like, oh, there's those guys taking pictures again. They're not going to hurt us. But anyway, there's a warehouse there now, so not to worry. But anyway, the other thing I want to say is that an ethical hunter does not go out and indiscriminately kill for no reason. My father was the biggest sportsman in the world. We ate venison, we ate pheasant, we ate duck. He ate squirrel once a week. He ate rabbit. But by gosh, if you killed that animal, you better use every bit of it. If he ate a squirrel, the pelt was used. If he ate a rabbit, you just, he taught us that you had to respect the wildlife and play by the rules. And that's the problem. There's no rules for the coyote. And despite the fact that we've killed millions of coyotes over the past two centuries, the coyote numbers have not gone down. And in fact, they've gone out. We now have coyotes in New Jersey. I grew up in New Jersey. There were no coyotes in New Jersey when I was a kid. There's coyotes now. They're smart enough to move and to survive. And they've been here for centuries. They were here before the colonization of this country and they will be here after man is long gone. I honestly believe that. The coyotes are smart, intelligent, and survive. And Norm believed that we should respect coyotes and their families. And we all should. Because they are families, they do grieve, they do play, they're lovely animals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Toby Tyler, followed by Rex Flowers, followed by Beverly Harry.
Hello. My name is Toby Tyler and I'm speaking on behalf of the Toyabi Chapter of the Sierra Club regarding item B6. Thank you for bringing this resolution to get forward to the council. I won't read our entire comment letter to you all, but I just want to say that when people find out about these contests, they're appalled that these violent competitions to slaughter wildlife, mostly coyotes, are allowed in this state. This includes the 40,000 members and supporters in the Toyabi Chapter who find this to be an extremely reprehensible blood sport that should be banned, just like dog fighting and cockfighting have been banned. These contests are based on outdated fears and misunderstandings about predators. They are also antithetical to fair chase, ethical hunting practices. They're counterproductive to sound wildlife management practices. And they violate the public trust doctrine that holds wildlife as a shared public asset that must be protected and maintained for present and future generations, not wantonly and violently slaughtered by a few. We strongly urge you to ban these contests by passing this resolution. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Rex Flowers, followed by Beverly Harry, followed by Leslie Mix.
Good morning. My name's Rex Flowers. I'm here in opposition to your resolution. I don't participate in coyote calling contests, but it is a gathering of men of the same like mind. I'm not saying that their opinions are the same as mine, nor am I saying they're different. But we keep wanting to single out certain minorities, certain groups, just because their thoughts are different than our own. I don't believe that your resolution should go forward, that resolution proposed should go forward to the Nevada Board of Wildlife Commissioners. That resolution means we're trying to put politics into managing wildlife. Wildlife is managed on sound science. There is no place in wildlife management for politics at all. Like I say, I would hope you, if you're that interested in conservation, I would question why you have proposed and passed many individual projects within this city, such as Stonegate, Montro, Somerset, Collin Ranch. These are all projects in the past that have negatively impacted our mule deer herds and the interstate mule deer herds. And you've given no thought to that. But today you're worried about maybe 1,000 coyotes a year. Sounds like a lot, but it's minimal. You're worried about doing the right thing, yet you have the homeless down on the river. They're defecating, urinating, washing in the river. What damage is that doing to our waterway? What have you done about cleaning that up? So again, I would say, please, keep your politics out of wildlife management. That is not where they belong. Take care of your city. Thank you.
JW, if you could give me a favor, if you could meet this gentleman and let him know what we are doing. Thank you very much.
Beverly Harry, followed by Leslie Mix, followed by Mario De La Rosa.
Good morning. My name is Beverly Harry. Thank you for listening to my testimony this morning. The highlight of my presentation will be in support for the City of Reno's resolution banning coyote killing contests. From my understanding, this resolution if passed will be provided to the State of Nevada State Wildlife Commission to bring more advocacy to the statewide ban to arbitrarily kill free and uncaptured coyotes. I do remember the stories of the buffalo in the plains, the extinction of the Lahontan Cuthbert trout at Pyramid Lake, and relic days of Long Canyon, and impacts to the sage grouse of Nevada. Whether we believe these impacts and behaviors contributed to the forms of genocide, overfishing, gain-for-exploitive industries, and horrible management, we need to understand that the problems we created and the new history we must create. We have killed people. We have made species extinct. We are killing water and land. We are trying to domesticate everything that is well on the essential lands of the western Shoshone, northern Puyt's and Washu lands. These coyotes are predators and should be a self-regulating species based on their food availability, territory, fecundity, and resource. So indigenous people have stated, leave things alone. Don't kill just to kill. The wolf Canis lupus has been spotted out in the Shasta Mountains just 150 miles from here just recently. As old territories are being reclaimed by the wolf and we see that the coyote population has tripled since the 1850s, there's a ranking order that needs to be considered. These killings cause many unintended and intended disruptions in pack dynamics which are tied to a healthy ecosystem. If alpha males and females are killed, this could possibly directly impact suppression. In carefully aligned packs that understand order, there could be possible rank that allows access for reproduction, survival of the fittest, and challenges like fighting for territory. And I know that the beta coyotes don't have the privilege in reproducing. Humans don't know what this means because we come with a know-nothing approach. If this is the case, respect should be the second course of action. Since my late husband, Norm Harry, has been involved in advocating against the coyote killing ban, he brought a presence of respect to all living things, including our earth mother. He authentically had a great relationship with people, his brothers and sisters and gifts of our earth. Our brothers are regarded like the four-legged, long-tailed fish people and insects. Our sisters are the flora, the fauna, the blue-green algae currents and the wild rice. If we can't support this resolution, we should strip our name as being part of the community of the wolf pack. I sincerely appreciate your time and consideration. I also thank Naomi Dewar and Mayor Sheevy of proclaiming August 14, 2021, as Norm Harry Day. And I hope it comes for the coming years. Thank you.
Leslie Mix, followed by Mario De La Rosa, followed by Jeff Dixon.
Good morning. My name is Leslie Mix. Some of you know me as the former president/CEO of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. So typically when I speak, I come from a fact-based, informative, market trend opinion. Actually, it's fact. I have borne witness to these killing contests. I've taken the pictures, I've taken video, I've seen the people, I've heard what they had to say. I've seen the disrespect that they have for the animal itself. I am adamantly opposed to them and I thank you very much for bringing this resolution forward. Because on the economy of scale, I believe, and the research that I've been able to pull up in terms of workforce development, bringing new businesses to town, hunting itself is going down bit by bit over the generation. The killing contests come from an old generation. They no longer belong in an advanced society like we've become in Northern Nevada. I believe sincerely that it will affect our workforce development if we continue to have an ancient way of looking at killing everything in our sight. I want to read you something that I pulled up because it's something that I heard the Wildlife Commissioners say. And this was, I think, very indicative of what a lot of hunters feel. And this quote is, "While I have nothing against killing coyotes or anything in season and within bag limits, contests are the antithesis of my conservation ethic." This is a quote from a hunter and it's very similar to what I've heard from wildlife commissioners and other local hunters. It's a barbaric practice. I urge you to all vote in favor of this resolution and thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you.
Mario De La Rosa, followed by Jeff Dixon, followed by Autumn Harry.
Good morning. My name is Mario De La Rosa. I am Executive Director with Latino Arte and Culture. We are a 5123 organization. I'm here to say thank you to the City Council and in particular to Mr. Oscar Delgado for your support to our organization and in particular to Fiesta on Wells. Fiesta on Wells is a celebration of Hispanic heritage month. This will give the opportunity to as many as 80 vendors that will have the opportunity to relaunch their small business, their small entrepreneurship. This has been very hard for the Latinx community the last, the past 18 months, and this is going to be good for our community. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Jeff Dixon, followed by Autumn Harry.
Mayor Sheevy, members of the council. I'm Jeff Dixon. I'm the Nevada State Director for the Humane Society of the United States. First, I'd like to thank councilmembers Dewar and Reese for bringing this resolution forward. It's something we've been talking about for a little while and we're glad to have this issue elevated again ahead of a Wildlife Commission meeting where it looks like they will not be taking action on this matter. This is a statement of values and our wildlife values and how we relate to wildlife in our state. And so it's very much in the council's purview to make such a statement. These contests are a reflection of, as other people have stated, an outdated mindset, what I would call a settler colonial mindset of domination of nature, of the ecology, that really came with a lot of destruction as Europeans came to this continent. And most people in this state, the plurality of people in this state, I should say, believe in coexistence. They call them mutualists. We should coexist with wildlife. And this would be a statement that we should coexist with wildlife. We should not just kill them for the sake of killing them. Wildlife managers have discussed ethics for a very long time. People within the hunting community have talked about how can we do this in a sort of respectable way? Because most people don't hunt, but hunters enjoy pretty high public support, whether it's acceptance or just tolerance of the activity. But people draw a line somewhere. Deer hunting for meat, for sustenance, that's something most people think are okay. But when you get to this issue, most people, even hunters, you know, even when they talk about it, they say, I don't participate in this. So I think that's very telling. So we would urge you to pass this resolution. Thank you again for hearing it and for bringing it up and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Our final public commenter is Autumn Harry.
Hello. How mu, no autumn Harry, mi na ni, no kui we pop in and out away, no kui we to cut out de ne no. Hi, everyone. My name is Autumn Harry and I am actually the father of, oh, sorry, not the father. I'm the daughter of the late Norm Harry. And I'm really honored and thankful for Councilwoman Dewar and Councilman Reese for bringing this forward because he did dedicate years of protesting these wildlife killing contests. And I think what a lot of people are forgetting is that this isn't a ban on killing wildlife, but it's a ban on the profiting of killing these innocent animals. And we have to really think about, you know, I'm from Pyramid Lake, I'm Numu, and our people have been living with coyotes, you know, since time immemorial. And our elders tell us stories about our oral histories and coyotes are a big part of that. And our people have always been respectful towards coyotes. And we still hold that same respect for them and we really value them within our communities and within our tribal communities. So I again urge you to pass this resolution and I really hope that it can set a precedence for the rest of the state as well and in Clark County. You know, we have to follow their lead in this as well. And yeah, just thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Mayor. It should be noted for the record that we received 44 letters of support and two concerned related to item B6 and one letter of support related to item B12. And with that, we have seven voicemails that need to be played.
Okay. Thank you so much.
I'm calling to thank you for the resolution supporting a ban on wildlife killing contests scheduled for the September 8 City Council meeting. This resolution honors the work on behalf of wildlife of Norm Harry. This is important for all of us who love the state, who love to hike, who love our wildlife. Please keep us safe. Thank you for this resolution supporting the ban on wildlife killing contests and this heinous activity now.
This is in regards to Naomi Dewar's and Devin Reese's resolution to support a state ban on wildlife hunting contests. I've lived in the North Valleys for over 40 years and I vote. Over the years, coyote sightings in my area have decreased, the populations of ground squirrels and cottontail rabbits have increased substantially. The coyotes serve a function in keeping squirrel and rabbit populations in control and therefore should not be hunted for sport. It's time we realize we can't mask slaughtering wildlife as doing something heroic for humanity. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Dr. Elena Tillman and I have grave concerns I wanted to bring up in this. First and foremost, the Nevada wildlife is managed in trust for all Nevadans. Allowing individuals to wantonly kill wildlife as part of a cruel blood sport is a grave violation of the state's duty under the public trust doctrine. I'd say... As someone who frequents Nevada, this leads me not wanting to bring my money and my revenue to Nevada at all. There's a number of other things that I wanted to mention as well, but first and foremost, for me, there's no scientific evidence that indiscriminately killing coyotes reduces their population, increases populations of game animals like deer, or even protects livestock. Randomly killing coyotes disrupts their pack structure, which increases their populations and increases conflicts beyond coyotes, humans, and domestic animals. And so preventing conflicts by utilizing humane, nonviolent solutions is far more effective. Any other solution to me is absolutely inhumane, barbaric, and disgusting. Further, the vast majority of Nevadans believe people should coexist normally with wildlife, first and foremost. Take a look at the science and take a look at the populace and the public. Additionally, please don't be one of the states that does the wrong thing and is on the wrong side of history. Eight states have already prohibited wildlife killing contests. They're still legal in 40-plus, you know, states, but as awareness of these barbaric events spreads, Americans aren't supporting this. They're increasingly demanding an end to this blood sport. Please don't be on the wrong side of history. I also believe that Nevada should join neighboring states. For example, Arizona, Colorado, California, and Mexico. I'm currently residing in California, and you've got to enact common sense provisions. Contest participants from other states like my state are now coming to Nevada to join wildlife. They should be enjoyed and appreciated by Nevadans and by visitors as well. So these are kind of my main points here. I really wish that you, and highly urge and encourage you to pay attention to science, pay attention to what the citizens want, be able to sleep at night knowing that you're not participating in something just absolutely horrific. And yeah, that's all I'm going to say on that. My number is 413-535-9622. And if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to call again. This is Dr. Elena Tillman, 413-535-9622. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Yes, this is Edwondo Ochoa, calling in support of the resolution condemning wildlife killing, the contest regarding this resolution. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Fana Tomlinson. I live on South Meadows Parkway in Reno. I am in support of the City Council's proposed resolution to end wildlife killing contests in Norm Harry's honor. We should never celebrate wanton waste with fun and prizes. Ethical hunters use all the parts. Nobody is eating coyotes or using fur from a bullet-ridden coyote. So I'm very grateful that Sydney Council is standing up and making a stance and keeping it ethical. I support the resolution to end wildlife killing contests. Thank you. Bye.
This is Martin A. David of Reno, Nevada. And I'd like to thank you very much for the resolution supporting a ban on wildlife killing contests. Even the words send shivers up my back. I'm asking that this resolution be passed with a rather high vote. There's something about this resolution that honors and improves the reputation of our city and our state. Killing contests, the term is an abomination. The action itself is an abomination. Thank you very much, and thank you for adding this technology, which allows us to remotely register our opinions. Martin David, my phone number is 408-315-4996.
My name is Rosa Ochoa. I live in Las Vegas, Nevada. I would like to register my comments regarding the resolution condemning wildlife killing contests in Nevada. I would like to urge the Reno City Council to support a resolution condemning wildlife killing contests today. Please, please support this resolution. Thank you.
All right, Madam Mayor. With that, we have no additional public comment.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, so we had a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're going to send it over to Councilwoman Dewar.
Okay. Item B6. All right. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor and members of the council. And I want to thank all the speakers, pro and con, that have written to us, that have showed up here today and have called in. I don't want to extend the discussion on wildlife killing contests just to extend it, but I did want to just get a few points on the record. The first thing is that in March, the Wildlife Commission initiated an effort to consider banning wildlife killing contests. And each of those words are important. It's wildlife, it's not coyotes per se, although coyotes are one of the main species that are participant in these type of contests. It's killing, it's not hunting, and they are a contest, they're often prizes. The Wildlife Commission asked for public comment and input, and several months ago, the Clark County Commission voted, did a resolution supporting a ban. So the Wildlife Commission meets all over the state. I believe the next time they're here in Reno is November. Now it's our turn to weigh in, and I decided that I feel like I have a pretty good temperature on our council. So I initiated this resolution, and I think the members of our council feel similarly because of my concern and their concern and even passion about the detrimental effects of these types of inhumane contests. I was joined by Councilmember Reese. I had reached out to him, and I thank him for his continuing support over the last six months. And I also wanted to note that I didn't want to just, neither of us wanted to just do a resolution, but it seemed very fitting in light of the fact that the city of Reno did recently designate August 14th, 2021, as Norm Harry Day in recognition of the work that he's done in the conservation arena generally, and then specifically about these killing contests. It was part of his ethos and ethic. And with that in mind, you've heard from the speakers, I'm sure you've seen the letters, you know, the points, pro and con, some of the ones that stood out to me most were, came from hunters. And they came from hunters who believe in ethical hunting, believe in, you know, the need, the opportunity, the desire to hunt, and I fully support that. And I want to make sure people understand, I support hunters, especially ethical hunters, who use, who work with the Wildlife Commission and observe the proper timeframes, seasons, amounts that you can take to maintain a balance in our ecosystem. Some would say, well, what, why a city resolution? First, to the point of why aren't we focusing on other issues? We are focusing continuously on other issues. In the seven years I've been on council, this issue has never been discussed. And we're also, this is not an exclusionary thing. We can weigh in on this issue as well as the usual issues that we weigh in on. It's a statement of principles. Reno is expanding and annexing many properties that are yet to be developed, so they're within the city limits. NDAO's office, the Division of Wildlife, or Department of Wildlife, is in Reno. It's not in any other part of the state. I mean, they may have out offices, but their main headquarters is here. Most of their employees work, are either Reno or adjoining community members. So it is very relevant, I think, to consider. And just as we sometimes even comment on national issues, I think it's highly important to address issues that are popping up right within our own community. So with that, I want to thank my cosponsor, Councilmember Reese. I don't know if he also has any comments. He already thanked one of our members, but I'll leave it there. And I just thought, I had a feeling there'd be commenters, and so I didn't want it to go. I wanted to allow the council to have an opportunity to comment, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Any further comments from councilmembers? Go ahead. Councilwoman Webber.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. And I want to say thank you to all the folks that have spoken today and given their comments, as well as the emails and the conversations that I've heard about this item. With all due respect to my colleagues and to those that have spoken, I cannot support this resolution. And I feel as if, I know that my Councilwoman Dewar talked about the Wildlife Commission, but, and Clark County's support of this, but in my opinion, this is something that our Washoe County Commission should have been involved with and did not support. And there is no other cities that are supporting, have supported, from my understanding, the same resolution. One of the things I think that is really important to note is that the Washoe County Advisory Board, to manage wildlife, has heard from many folks, and hopefully the folks will continue to talk with them and to attend, or if you haven't, hopefully you contact the, those folks on the Board of the Wildlife Commission, because they will be having their meeting on the 21st, and hopefully you will make sure to comment there as well. I just feel that this is not the place, and so I appreciate my colleagues bringing it forward, and I appreciate the discussion, but I want to just let you know that I can't support this resolution. So, thank you.
All right. Any other comments from councilmembers?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, and I don't see a staff here, so I'll point it to Ms. Dewar. So, did one of the speakers say that they're not going, that the Wildlife is not, Commission is not doing this rulemaking?
No. The Wildlife Commission initiated the rulemaking back in March. They've been traveling around the state as they do. They hold their meetings in different parts of the state. They've taken public input and testimony. I think their next meeting's in September, but then I think the one after that's November. So I really think it's, at some point, they'll either consider it, not consider it, take it off the agenda, vote on it. This is just our opportunity to weigh in.
Callie Wilson for the record with the City Manager's Office, just to clarify for you, Councilmember Brackus. The Board of Wildlife Commissioners is next scheduled to meet on September 24th. I looked at their agenda this morning. It's on there as an informational item only for the next meeting. So we'll have to wait to see what comes out of that, and then what could come at their following meetings in the weeks that follow.
Okay. I mean, here's how I look at this. As a matter of practice, we're approached a lot on a lot of issues of other governmental authorization. And, you know, it's well within our, you know, role to comment on those. But the most impactful one, and a lot of times, you know, rather than, you know, the most timely, I think, is when we build our legislative platform. And the one for the state, we build every other year in advance of the session. The federal one, we do every year. And I thought I heard that the Wildlife Commission wasn't going to do anything, and if they didn't do anything, that means then the legislature thinks if they do things. And I just, most of all, though, I'm really looking for consistency. If we take these off-cycle actions, then someone, somewhere, remember that we also want to roll that up into the state platform that, you know, we won't be doing for a while. So I just would like to call that out, that if this is a policy of the Reno Council, it should be built into that draft legislative plan, and for discussion at that point too, and consistency, so.
Okay. And if I could just respond in my remaining time, the, or her remaining time, the Wildlife Commission is the preeminent regulatory body for this type of action. If they don't take an action, or they take a different action, the legislature can always weigh in on anything that anybody does. I mean, including us, right? They often do. So I think it's best to keep it local. This is the moment and the time. They've put it on their agenda. We didn't pick the time. They picked the time. And so I think it's appropriate to comment within the time that they're collecting public comment.
Oh, yeah. I absolutely agree that during rulemaking, if we have an inclination toward rulemaking at any level, you know, I've seen environmental impact statements come from federal agencies before, and wondered what, you know, right outside our back door, are we going to get involved? You know, a question between what the policy does and what the administrative apparatus does. But no, I support during a state rulemaking effort, our expression, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. And I want to say thank you to Councilwoman Dewar and Councilman Reese. And, you know, I think you have to be very careful when we're going to play political games of when you want to jump in and when you don't. I think it's, you know, the right thing to do to speak up when you think that something is very wrong. And I have to say, and, you know, this is a body we disagree at times, and that's all well and good. I think that that is very healthy, and it's very supportive. This is a country of, you know, free speech, and so we certainly support that. For me, however, I have to say that this is an animal cruelty issue, and I find it heinous. And one of the things, you know, there was an animal cruelty issue that was brought to me over the weekend, and I have not slept over it. And I was going to ask Ms. Willsey, oh, you're right there. I honestly, I want us to be a city where people understand that we will not tolerate cruelty to animals. And listen, we are Nevada. We grew up with hunters. I mean, you talked about your father hunting, and we, and so, you know, we do, we support hunting. But that type is incredibly, but that, that type, whenever you're, you know, I've seen things directly on Facebook, that's one of the reasons I got off. It was very disturbing. And some of the things that were said and joked about, and the prizes and things like that, were incredibly inappropriate. And I know, you know, many, many, many hunters, they take it very seriously, and I also think it truly is very demeaning, but I also think it is, it comes down to animal cruelty. I want us to be a city where people understand we will not tolerate cruelty to animals, period. And I want to send that message very, very strongly. I want to know what we can do as a city to make sure that people understand that. I mean, I get it, like, that's, you know, the county over at the Animal Services and Councilwoman Dewar sits on the board, but I do think it's very, very important. I think people need to understand we won't tolerate that kind of cruelty. So what, what can we do as a city to make sure that that's a very strong message?
Sure. Callie Wilson for the record with the City Manager's Office. So in this particular resolution, on this particular item, one of the things that's written in there is, is asking staff to forward this directly to each one of the commissioners who will be taking part in any sort of decision on this particular topic. Oftentimes, sometimes our resolutions are just adopted and they exist, but we've added kind of a direction to staff to forward this directly onto folks, and asking for that to be included in the public record and public conversation for the decision-making body to consider.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And maybe we'd put that on future agendas. I mean, we were the ones that, with the animal puppy mills.
Yeah, the puppy mill. Yeah, we took action before anyone.
And so I want to continue to be that type of city that cares about animals and our wildlife. It's very important. Okay. That being said, I, go ahead, Madam Clerk. Do you have anything for me?
We have no public comment. We did at the beginning.
I think Councilman Reese put his sanitizer out.
I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, thank you so much.
It really needs to be read or something.
Please, go ahead.
I know. A reminder, I won't add much to the conversation. I think Councilmember Dewar said all the things are important to me. I will say that it was certainly moving to have Norm's family here today, and that certainly meant a lot to me personally. For my part, I just think that as a council, we are sometimes asked by our constituents to wade into waters, and we always have to choose whether those are the waters that we have a responsibility for. And that's not an easy decision to make. I don't fault some for thinking that that's not the decision that they want to take. I would never want us to be, you know, accused of doing nothing, right, or being I would never want us to be, you know, accused of doing nothing, right, or being a body of do-nothings, or a council that does nothing, because I don't think that that's who we are. I think we're a council that does our best every day to stand up for what we believe is right, and, and this is one of those circumstances. So, I think one of the callers even mentioned something about being on the right side of history, and I think ultimately, that's what we sometimes are tasked with. Some things that we do each day are very administrative and pedantic, and other things are potentially legacy-defining. And this, I don't think should be overstated for its importance, but I just think that we have to acknowledge the importance of the people who were here before us, the importance of animals, and the land, and have an ethic that is directed towards that. I have no objection to folks who participate in hunting as an activity, when that activity is done, you know, sort of in a way that honors both animals and the land and the, the history of that activity. And my, my support for it is not any less enthusiastic. I will say, and I don't know if this is something that Mr. Hall would have to weigh in on, normally we speak to an item before we vote on it, and in this case, we voted on the consent agenda. My understanding of that.
But this was pulled.
Okay.
This was pulled.
I missed that part, so maybe I've just been focusing.
That's why we're taking it separate.
So, appreciate that, and I'm excited to support enthusiastically the efforts of my colleague, and hope that we'll have the support there for the resolution. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay. So, we have a motion?
Motion. I'll make a motion. I want to note, eight states have taken the action in their commission, and 16 other local governments like us have also weighed in. So, with that in mind, I would make a motion to approve this resolution, to send a letter to the Wildlife Commission banning wildlife-killing contests on behalf of the City Council.
All right. Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilwoman DeWor. I have a second from Councilman Reese. Any further discussion, seeing that there is none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
All right. Motion carries six, one. All right. Thank you very much.
And thank you to my colleagues. I think it's a good move.
Thank you, you guys. Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk?
Madam Mayor, I apologize. I actually don't show a motion on the remaining consent agenda item, so we need to go.
Yeah, we voted.
We did.
We did.
We went back and watched the video, and I don't show any motions.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, let's move to approve.
Second.
Let's move to approve the consent agenda.
So, moved.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. With that, we're on item C1, which is a public hearing for a resolution to amend fiscal year 2020, or 2122 fee schedule.
Okay. Hold on one second. We are, C1. All right. Madam Clerk, let the record reflect that the City Council is opening the public hearing. Was proper notice given? Any correspondence received?
Madam Mayor, proper notice was given, and no correspondence was received. In addition, we have no public commenters registered.
Okay. Thank you very much. I would like to ask at this time, do any councilmembers have any disclosures? All right. Seeing none, we are going to move on, and I'm going to hand it over to you, Devera. Nice to see you. You've got a cute haircut. I like it. All right. So, go ahead. Put it away.
So, what we have in front of you today is a, an amendment to our fee schedule that was adopted in May. As the departments start putting together their, their documents to implement the fee schedule, they noticed some inconsistencies and some, I guess, some missing fees, some inconsistencies, and this is really just a cleanup to make sure that the fee schedule gets implemented properly, and that it's consistent. So, for Parks and Recreation, there are some changes, and if you have some specific questions, both the departments are here that are making the amendments. It's in the Parks and Recreation Department, there really was some inconsistencies, and then also some simplification that we've done. Instead of having every park shelter listed separately, we've done it as, you know, by size. So, that will actually make it easier for them to implement their fees. And then we added some additional fees, just to allow them to charge. A lot of this has to do with special events, deposits, and things like that, that had somehow gone off our fee schedule. So, those are added back in to make sure that we are getting the deposits that we need, and getting the sites cleaned up after special events. For community development, there really was, again, cleanup. So, just to make sure everything's consistent, and then there's, they reduced in one particular fee category. And again, with, with community development in our building enterprise, we're trying to keep the fees flat, so that we continue to manage that fund according to NRS. So, in instituting some of those fees, we find some lapses, and again, just some minor cleanup. We don't really expect additional money coming in from these changes necessarily, and if we do, it's very small amounts, because, like I said, there was a dollar here and a, you know, rounding error there. If you have specific questions for the departments, they're here to answer those, but we are recommending that you adopt the changes to the fee schedule, and so the departments can implement those.
Okay. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. All right.
Move to approve?
Wait, I had a question.
Oh, sorry.
Hold on one second. No public comment, correct? Perfect. Okay. Bring it back to the body. Any questions? Councilwoman Brackus.
You know, I had a question, and a memo came in, but I still had a question on that information. These courtesy notices, it seemed to be that some prices were dropped and then moved to another spot. So, courtesy notices are priced separately than the actual notices from, what are these courtesy notices? I'm completely not remembering those. And why, why, why did you not just put those to the base of those items?
For the record, Arlo Stockham, Community Development Director. You may recall about a year ago, we had a discussion that it would be beneficial to provide early notification to residents, as opposed to only the officially required notifications 10 days prior to a hearing. So, when we have a case that's coming to the Planning, Commissioner, or Council, we send out mailed notices immediately upon exception of the, acceptance of the application, and then a second round of noticing prior to the public hearings. Excuse me. What happened here is we had already built that additional cost into our fee schedule, and then it was built in again through the annual update. So, this is a $100 cost to send out the mailings, and this would straighten it up, so it applies to all the applicable applications.
So, you had it in twice on what we adopted with the budget, now you're backing that second cost in.
Correct.
Okay. Got that. And then, there was also some odd, can I continue on?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. There was an odd reference in the fee schedule about the retract lid, and that it was related to business licensing. I don't, I don't understand, what's that about? Is it a plaza?
For the record, Jamie Schroeder, Director of Parks and Recreation. Thank you for that clarifying question. So, we aren't quite sure on the history of how the retract plaza rental fee ended up under business license, other than where it should be, which is under Parks and Recreation, because retract plaza is considered a city park under RMC 823. So, we're just moving it to the proper location in the fee schedule.
Okay. You're not moving it over to business licenses, you're moving it out of business licenses.
Correct. Out from business license to Parks and Recreation.
So, anyone can rent the lid, just like you could rent the gazebo at the flower?
Yes, somewhat. So, the retract plaza really isn't available for rental, like a picnic shelter, but you could rent it, and if you were to rent it, it triggers a special event process.
Okay. And so, that's the fee schedule?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? None? Okay. Councilman Reese, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve.
I have a motion from Councilman Reese.
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Webber. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Madam Clerk, back at you.
All right. Madam Mayor, we're on item D1, which is a presentation for an interlocal cooperative agreement with RTC.
Okay. Perfect. At this time, Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask you, do you have more public comment?
We do have.
And we can take public comment, too, after?
We do have public comment on this item, so we can take it now, or we can take it after your presentation.
Okay. We can, what would you guys prefer? You want to do it now or after?
Now.
You want to do it now? Okay. Come on up.
I don't know if I'm next, but.
Okay. So, our first public commenter is Kai Plaskin, followed by Randy Collins.
Thank you, councilmembers. Kai Plaskin, again, with the Truckee Meadows Bicycle Alliance, and we aren't just bike people. I wanted to make that clear. We, we represent skateboarders, people who ride scooters and electric bikes and one-wheels, really anything that isn't a car, right? And we all want to be able to ride downtown, and I was telling you about Virginia Street, and how I'd given example of how it's not really safe a little bit earlier, and a 12-year-old boy asked me to ride down Virginia Street with him. So, I took him down, and, and I was absolutely terrified. We were, we had cars in front of us and behind us, and you know that people fall off bikes all the time, and if we were to fall, we'd be run over. And I've got this child with me, and I'm terrified. So, it's an example that you can all feel if you wanted to ride your bike down Virginia Street. It's, it's a serious problem. And so, this kind of development, we know, is dangerous, and it's not old development, it's new. So, how do we get to a place where we've designed things that are dangerous like this? And I went and I talked to Randy, who's here from College Cyclery this week, and how did we get to this point? And he'll correct me if I'm wrong, but the understanding is that when Midtown was designed, that the city, RTC, and our community leaders and businesses, we all agreed that we wouldn't put a bike path down that, and instead, we would do it on Center Street. And so, it was a grand compromise. We would not do Virginia. People could ride down Center, get off their bikes, and walk over to Virginia Street if they needed to. So, you know, in, in short, we oppose D1, this placemaking study, because it's being as, used as an excuse to walk back that grand compromise, that agreement that we all made, and that we're all on the same page with. And, and now, you know, spending another $150,000 to tell us what the engineering studies and the public opinion that, that has been done over the past three years already tell us that Center Street is the best place for this, that Virginia Street doesn't work, that no matter what kind of engineering we do, it's, it's too congested for bicycles to speed through and get to where they need to go. Trying to ride your bike down Virginia, I'd like you to try that someday, consider it, and, and see if it works for you, and it doesn't. So, I don't approve item D1. Send a message to city staff, RTC, to follow through on this grand compromise, this commitment that we made, and the vision of a safe and accessible downtown for everybody. Thank you.
Randy Collins?
Counsel, and Madam Mayor, thanks for having me. I am Randy Collins. I have College Cyclery in Midtown. I've been in business nearly 50 years, and 47 of those years in Midtown itself. I was also part of advisory committees with the RTC, the Bicycle Pedestrian Action, or advisory committees for eight years, and we worked with infrastructure problems, in fact, making changes to streets to make them safer, bikes, pathways. They were just merely no cost to the taxpayers. They were just paint and stripe and resealing projects, and they effectively worked really well. This project that we're looking at, that has been batted around for the last six years, is the Center Street Cycle Track Project, which was also, as Kyle mentioned, a product, or byproduct of the compromise that we did on Midstreet, Midtown, street allocation for bicycle infrastructure. That incorporated a lot of what we wanted to have happen, as far as connectivity of bikes to university, and also to Midtown itself. I look at it personally as a spine, and you have to have a spine in a body before the limbs are attached. This is important, because this makes a single shot throughway to, from Midtown to UNR. If you look at the geography of what possibly might be proposed, of looking at Virginia Street as a possible bike boulevard, it doesn't make a lot of continuous sense of what a continuous bike infrastructure is. You would cross over on Liberty Street to cross over to Asharo and, on Midtown, which is kind of sketchy right now. I know I've been on their street forever. So, studying that is great. That's a great idea, but I don't want D1 to be, I don't want it to derail or pause what work we've all worked on to get it to 30% of approval at this point. We did a study in 2016 at a cost of about $140,000 to the taxpayers on Midtown recommendations from the Urban Institute. They came up with a similar plan that I was representing the Great Streets Coalition with, which was to put bike infrastructure on Virginia Street at the time, and make it so it's available. They came up with similar ideas of making an alternative street path on Center Street. It makes sense, Center Street, because it's one continual rain. I have fellow merchants that would approve that, and it's always been in favor of that. So, if we can, as a city, keep the momentum going for this project, would be greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you so much, and you are certainly a bicycle staple in the city of Reno. I remember you always having a bike on the top of your car when I was a little girl. I remember. So.
That's a nice way of saying I'm old.
Well, no. Well, you look exactly the same, I'm telling you. You look great. But I just remember, everyone would always say, "There's the cycle guy." And so, you know, you're just one of those people in Reno that's sort of iconic for something, and it's been bicycles, so, thank you.
With that, Madam Mayor, it should be noted, Chris Cutshaw is in the audience in opposition but does not wish to speak. In addition, we have received one letter of support and 16 in opposition for this item.
Okay.
With that? Yep. No further public comment.
Thank you so much. All right. Jeff, we're going to let you take it away. I'm glad you're here. I am really looking forward to your presentation, because I've had a lot of questions, and, you know, we haven't spoken about it in depth, and so I wanted to make sure that I'm here having the opportunity to listen to you. I'm excited for your presentation, so go ahead and take it away.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, we love your first slide. So far, you're doing amazing.
I haven't seen that one before. It's nice.
Looks good.
Thank you. We're off to a good start here.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. For the record, Jeff Limbert, Revitalization Manager. Before you today is an interlocal agreement between RTC and City of Reno to conduct a downtown Virginia Street urban placemaking study. So, what is a placemaking study? Put simply, a placemaking study is designing for people. It is a multifaceted approach to planning, design, and management of public spaces. This study will explore the contextual factors associated with our downtown core, and will ultimately provide a framework of how we can design Virginia Street in a way that maximizes multimodal transportation and interaction with the surrounding environment, including the adjacent properties and our public spaces. Additionally, it will provide case studies of how cities similar to Reno have accomplished this and provided us with alternative planning-level sketches for discussion. We do not anticipate there being one option, but a range of options, each with their own benefits and costs. If our ultimate goal is to have our downtown become more of an urban neighborhood, as suggested in other studies, we need to be more intentional in our approach. Lastly, it will provide a set of options for the form and function of not only bicycle facilities, but other microability and transit options. Why another study? To get it right. Virginia Street has always been seen as our main street that connects UNR with Midtown and beyond. Our downtown is changing. Here's is in the process of becoming Reno City Center. It will provide additional housing, commercial activities, and office space. Cannon Flats has increased the amount of foot traffic by students. You see this daily. While it's not a direct investment from UNR, it is a step in the right direction to create the space needed for such an investment to occur. 661 Lay. 661 Lake and the Ballpark Project have submitted building permits for their developments, increasing housing opportunities in our downtown. Additionally, it will bring more individuals to our downtown. This study will provide us with a varied set of options of how we can leverage this movement and help address what Virginia Street should become. How should Virginia Street develop to create better transportation options, increase housing, and provide for additional commercial and retail opportunities? How do we better incorporate our plazas and special events? We need to build off the previous studies, such as the ULI study completed in 2016 and the Downtown Action Plan completed in 2017. Council has established making progress on the Downtown Action Plan a tier-one priority. It calls out on upgrading Sierra, Virginia, and Center Streets, but it doesn't call out specifically what that looks like. The ULI study calls out for completion of a master plan for Virginia Street to enable the corridor to become a celebrated street. In many ways, this study can be seen as that master plan. The ULI study specifically addresses landscaping, lighting, public art, transit opportunities, and evolving land uses. These same concepts are reinforced in the Downtown Action Plan. How do we make these desires more intentional? It's important to note that no decisions are being made today. The goal of this study is to provide the community and council with options for revitalizing Virginia Street. Community engagement. This is not an exhaustive list of stakeholders. The graphic just reinforces our desire and commitment to engage in the community. As with previous plans, input from all users will be solicited. Not only do we need to be intentional with our next steps, but there must be buy-in. And not only from those that interact with Virginia Street, but those that have direct influence on the outcomes. This study must establish a cohesive vision. Some of you may be aware of the Downtown Reno Partnership is conducting its own visioning process. The work being completed in that process can be integrated into this study and further aid the selected consultant in understanding the community desires for downtown. The next steps are the general steps that we would go through for a typical RFP process. We're in a position to where we could release the RFP within the next 10 days. Soon after proposals will be due, staff will be working to select that consultant and ultimately bring it forward for council's approval to enter into an agreement with them. The goal is to have this completed within six months, but the reality is there's, you know, possibility of this slipping out into the future. But ultimately, the consultant will come back with options to present to council. And again, it's to provide the community and council with the options for revitalizing Virginia Street.
With that, I'll leave you with the proposed recommendation and take any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you so much, Doc. Good job. Thank you. Okay. I am going to bring it back to the board. Questions, Councilwoman Doerr?
Yeah, all right. Well, I'm sure we all have questions, so I'll just jump right in. I listened to your presentation. I've read the information. I've read the letters. Where... What I'm missing is, how did this placemaking study become perceived to be anti-bike? Why do we have 16 people writing in against it? Does... I didn't hear a motion saying, "Stop the cyclo..." You know, the Center Street Cyclotron. Is that part of it?
It is not. I don't understand why it's being perceived that way. Ultimately, we're focused on Virginia Street. I mean, it is true, whatever you do on Virginia Street will have impacts to, you know, Sierra and Center Street. So it's very, very well possible that this study could actually reinforce the cycle track as preferred option, because after doing an in-depth analysis of Virginia Street, as some of the public commenters have stated, that it may not work on Virginia Street.
But is there an understanding with RTC that if we say yes to this, we're saying no to the cycle track?
I'm not aware of anything.
Okay? So I wanted to get that out because that's important to me. We do want to be that city that the mayor-
Unfortunately, I think there's inaccurate information-
Right.
-that comes out from people that are-
Well, that's what I'm-
-anti-RTC. And then it becomes almost conspiracy theory-like. It's-
Okay.
Honestly, like, I... It really is concerning to me when you hear that kind of negativity, like, and things that are absolutely not true. I just, you know, I had to pull some video of that, and it's really a thing. And that's where I think you have to be careful, because I think this is so critical to have incredible bike... biking infrastructure.
Yeah.
I think we can be a city that gets it right, but I also think it is not good if you have people gaslighting the process. And I would tell you, we're the first to say we want incredible biking infrastructure and especially the cycle track. I mean, that was like, we were so excited to get it.
Yeah.
So I wanted to just put that out there because I was so discouraged when there are people out there, quite frankly, that are sitting on this body, that are making it difficult. And I think it was very inaccurate information.
Okay.
I will champion all day long for better biking infrastructure. We know it's a great way for our economy, but also now more than ever, sustainability for cities, right? And there's a lot of reasons that make absolute, complete sense to do it.
Yeah. So a couple pieces of my confusion. So when we were working on Midtown, which I, you know, we have several champions in Midtown, and I supported that tremendously. And there was a question about whether to put a dedicated bike lane in Virginia Street on Midtown. And my opinion, just one of many, was to separate the bike lanes and have going north on Center, but maybe a little different, having coming south on, I think it was Forest and Hunter, I think, those streets, you know, so that you could still ride a bike on Virginia. But, and as I understand from our staff, Carrie Coscare, city engineer, they share a lane with cars in Midtown. The speed limit is much slower now. It used to be like 45, 50, and people drove even faster. And now I believe it's 25. Is that correct in Midtown? So, or 35? Could you just... Anyway, it's slow. And the point is, is that bikes can coexist with cars in that realm. We also have wider sidewalks. So what we said is, at least what I said was, I'd love to see the bike traffic separated. Now, I will just say this. I redrove Center Street, and one of the things that I saw, and I happen to agree with, I'm not sure that I, and I'm being very honest, I'm not, I recreationally bike, not professionally bike in any way. But it is very hard. I've been in other cities that have dedicated cyclotrons. Example is Vancouver. So one of the things they've done is they have a two-way, and it's separated by, in their case, concrete planters. And it has really narrowed the street, and they put it on some streets that are very traveled. I would love to see a separated cycle area on Center, maybe in this way, separated. I'm not sure that I'm supportive of the two-way. But again, I don't know that that's what we're talking about here. I mean, what we're talking about here is a placemaking study. And my question on that is, we voted a couple years ago to enter into a contract with the folks on City Center. And we chose an applicant to work on the Bowling Stadium, the Event Center, and potentially build a hotel. I wasn't very keen on the hotel on Sunnys Plaza with the trees, but, you know, I voted for, to move forward with an independent study of that. Haven't heard anything back from those folks. So I'm interested in the placemaking study. I just don't think that these are exclusionary. And I want to hear you say it one more time, I guess.
Nothing is exclusionary. I mean, again, one of the slides it points to that it focuses on Virginia Street, but it's a much broader scope. And so that is part of what this plan does, is to look at whatever we do to Virginia Street, how does it impact the other plans that are in place, whatever they may be? And how does it, you know, bring those together to make it even better downtown?
Okay. And then my last comment is, we have had in my time here, many, many studies. And I've gone through several of them. And one of the things I think that we've been a little poorer on is execution. So we, you know, I even participated on the Lids study, Councilmember Bobzine and I. You know, we spent an enormous amount of time. And it's only now, about six years later, that we are actually, you know, starting to revitalize the Lids. So I get that it's money, timing, personnel, COVID, all of that. But I just think, finally, we have to be concerned, when we enter into these studies, where are we going? What's the action item? How do we execute? And I'll even bring it to sustainability. You know, we were going to consider sustainability. We put it off. Nine months later, we haven't brought it back. So just with that in mind, I'd love to see this sort of start, middle, finish, bring it back to us. Thank you.
I would agree. And I think in this presentation, I use the word intentional quite a bit. And we have to be more intentional when we do these plans.
I think we're like incredibly anxious. I want to get this going like as soon as possible. I think we've all felt that way. But I got to tell you, I learned a lot from Midtown, quite honestly. I kind of came unglued when it came to the concrete going down the middle of the street.
Yeah.
That was a really, really hard one for me to swallow. And I was told of... Not as told that I know it was attached to federal funding. We couldn't do it if we didn't do it. I mean, Carrie knows. I called her 24/7, and you know, and, I mean, so one thing I did learn, I mean, I would just beg and plead, like, sometimes this has got to be about, not about doing it fast, but doing it right. And I learned a lot from Midtown. And I got to tell you, driving down it today, I look at that concrete and I shake my head like nobody's business. And I-
But you still don't like it, is what you're saying?
I absolutely hate it. I hate it, hate it, hate it. But that's besides the point. Everything else is beautiful. It's amazing. But we-
I agree with you.
It was attached to this crazy federal funding. And I thought that that was just a waste of taxpayer dollars and such a disservice to making this beautiful street. But it wasn't, you know-
I agree with you.
-on this level or at the RTC. It was very strange how they sort of attached that funding. But there's a couple other things, and I know that this is even separate, but maybe I would love to have another meeting and a conversation with you guys, because I want experts at the table, actual cyclists that are using our city and know how to navigate our city and what that looks like. And what I mean by that is also looking at, I think, Sierra Street. We have an opportunity to get this right. Sierra Street, too, I think, and I'm hearing from a lot of the residents, you know, how loud the cars are, and if we could also push more people into cycling and we have more opportunities on these streets. I also have seen great cities that do it well, where they do not just the one way, but they go the other way as well on the one-way streets. And it's been very, very successful. I, at one time, really loved the idea of doing a big shot down Virginia Street down to Midtown. Incredibly dangerous, incredibly dangerous. So I think that's the one thing. There's a lot of different questions that I think we have to really dive into, because I want to do this so well and so right. And I want it also to be a big tourism driver, where people say, "Have you been to Reno? It's a great place to cycle." And I do think, one thing we have missed the mark on, and I am glad that you've brought it to the attention of the council, and it's becoming more and more apparent, is placemaking. Placemaking is going to be so essential. And so I'm really glad that we're looking at placemaking. But I, again, I think there's a lot of different questions. I would like to know, you know, what those look like. I can't make, I can't come to the conclusion unless I have the data. But I also need the people at the table, like Kai, if you can bring on, you know, consultants like Kai, or someone that knows how to navigate, you know, really what is happening in the cycling community to make this a much better community when it comes to our cycling infrastructure. So, but thank you. I really appreciate it. Good job. Okay, Councilwoman Bruckus.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am challenged with this item. And I listened intently to what you said. And about half of what you said were matters not related to the Virginia corridor. They were in the vicinity and area. And so you made a great case for what the case I was making last week, which is, it's time to redo the downtown redevelopment plan. I mean, a lot of the economics that you're talking about, business environment, go in the redevelopment plan. We're going to be talking about that later, and I think we need to do that. And so, and I think we have to if we're going to continue it with a redevelopment agency. So what I'm hearing from you, and I do have experience in planning, I have a graduate degree in it, and, you know, from pla... And there's different types of plans. And what I'm hearing from you is a corridor plan. And corridor plans are usually operational, and it sounds like I heard some operational sort of focus from you. So I'm really struggling with why we're not doing the broader plan, which I'm hearing half of your discussion about. And we're doing this operational plan on this street. And the problem I have with the corridor planning focus and component is, RTC went... Well, we took a vote here to do, excuse me, I'm... Can I still have the floor? We took a vote here to do the Center Street project. It is in implementation. It is about to be delivered to this community. I heard before this item came to us that there was concern with that project, and there was a desire to go on a focus to another street. I can't remember who told me that. It might have been, probably was Mr. Manager. But then when your staff report came forward, it was absolutely silent on Center Street. But you're representing a corridor analysis. So I guess the problem I'm having with is if it's not about Center Street, the world that I operate in is Center Street's moving forward. If it isn't, if there's someone who needs some discussion on that, then it needs to come back to this body ASAP, in my view. Okay? So I was disappointed to not see any of that analysis in your report. But, so as far as I know, Center Street's going forward. And if it's not, someone's not following the direction of this body. And I just don't know why I'm sitting here taking votes for things to this quasi judicial, this agency we've created to not fulfill our votes, you know? What's going on? So I'll leave that over there. But if we're going to go do another corridor study, they did a, RTC did a Keystone Avenue corridor study. Some of that has not been implemented. I want focus on that. When we did Midtown, we did a study on Forest Street as the, as the parallel bike route from California Avenue to its terminus at Mount Rose. Where's that? I really don't think that we should continue to do corridor studies unless we're finished on one and moved on and have a report on where we're at on that. If these are intertwined issues, you know, bring them in the context of that. But I didn't see that. So I'm really struggling with the presentation. I think a lot of the ideas are great, and they're actually echoing what I've been advocating for a couple weeks now, which I think are necessary. But if it's a corridor study-
Councilwoman Bruckus, sorry.
Okay. I would also, Madam Mayor, could I, I know you're in a hurry to end the meeting today, but could I, after this-
You're not in a hurry. You're just over time.
Oh, I know.
I want to make sure if someone else wants to talk, and then I'll come back to you.
So just- Okay, thank you. I'd like to ask the-
I'm just trying to ask everyone to have respect so that they also can be heard. So-
Okay.
Hold on a second.
Okay. And if he could respond to the questions I'm asked?
Hold on one second, please. Councilwoman, did you have something to say? Go ahead. Councilwoman Jordan?
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. First off, I did want to compliment Jeff on the presentation. I appreciate it. I thought it was quite thorough and connects a lot of the dots that we, whether in my role in the RTC or my almost nine years of work, work on the RTC, on actually doing work, the importance of these studies and bringing them all together. I think everybody does get frustrated that, you know, we got the ULI reports, and they were great. We got some of the other studies that we did. We found them fantastic. And then they kind of sat, and there weren't a lot of action. But what a lot of those studies, if you'll recall, they identified empty lots in town and said this lot needs to be activated, like the county property across from the courthouse. I remember that one specifically. We don't fully control what happens there. There was a lot of that that was incorporated in some of those Virginia Street-specific studies. What it didn't do was took more of a global look at the surrounding streets and all of the impacts, the growth, the projects that have come in are coming in or have fallen off, and where these centers of activity and population, and how all that moves together. And I think the importance is, is, and again, how these things got tied, I don't know where the conspiratorial sort of crazy-out-there theory was, is to make sure that we are expending taxpayer dollars in the appropriate way, in the appropriate places, so as not to have to go back and do them again. I think that frustrates our taxpaying folks significantly. And again, we said in our strategic planning, Reno gets it right. It didn't say Reno gets it fast. It didn't say Reno gets it kind of. It said Reno gets it right. And everybody that's looking at the university and the downtown activations, they want to see meat on the sandwich. They want to see not just areas for improvement, they want to see, well, what does that look like? What does that mean? What is the detail? What is behind all of this? What is the vision? And all of the people that contribute to that vision, having them all at the table, and this idea that somehow certain property owners downtown are driving it to take money from... I don't even know where that came. I have been very vocal in saying, university students, 20,000 students and faculty, you got to have somewhere to go, downtown. And right now, a block long of a circus, circus wall is not inviting. That's part of the discussion. That has to change, too. I mean, that really needs to change. So I'm not sure where some of this crazy talk came, but I think this is fantastic. It's necessary if we're truly going to... is fantastic. It's necessary, if we're truly going to, we're at a point in time where we are next generationally looking at what our downtown is. It's not one industry, it's not one group, it is all of us. And we have to have those voices at the table and do it right. So I appreciate your, uh, presentation, and I fully support this. Thank you.
All right. Any other council members?
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Reese.
Oh, thank you. Um, first, Mr. Limber, thank you for the presentation, I thought it was excellent. I, there are some questions that I still have, and so maybe I'll start out with the first one. Where is the Center Street project? We heard some of the public commenters talk about 30% complete. And then, can you tell me, who is the person who is completing that project, or leading that project?
Yeah, I'll defer that question to Ms. Koski, she'll be better suited to answer.
Okay, thank you so much. Ms. Koski, always a welcome addition to our council chambers, brightens my day to see you. Good morning.
Good morning, thank you. Carrie Koski, your city engineer. To answer your question is, where are we at with that particular project? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
So, we are at the 30% design. Um, when I say "we," I mean the RTC is leading the charge for the, uh, 30% design.
Okay, thank you. That, that was my understanding as well, and so I would just situate myself. I mean, I think for my part, um, two things are true. One is, well, maybe three things. One is that, um, as Madam Mayor has said, and has long advocated for, we want this community to be more bicycle friendly. And that is in spite of the fact that I'm not a bicyclist. I don't own a bicycle. I want to see people using bicycles, in part because I believe, um, it reduces our carbon footprint. It is a great way to transport and get around town. I, I'm someone who has advocated for scooters, roller skates, roller blades, skateboards, whatever it is. We've gotta do that, and we've gotta do it safely. I think that we have spent, you know, decades of being beholden to cars, and our cities were designed for cars, and we have a long way to go, and it's going to take it some time to get away from sort of elevating cars, and how cars have led to the design of cities. So I'm willing to do that. I think, too, that COVID has fundamentally altered our timelines for a lot of things that have gone on over the last several years, and it also gives us a moment to pause. Um, I am interested and fundamentally believe that we should conduct the study, because I want to understand more about what is going on downtown, as to three specific streets, Center, Virginia, and Sierra, and the changes that have gone on, and the changes that are currently going under, being, you know, sort of undergoing. Think about the Canyons Project, some of the other projects that are coming, the reengineering of the Harrah's to be, um, you know, residential. I think that has an impact on what we're doing. And all of those things are to say that I wasn't part of a grand compromise. I've been on the body the least amount of time of my colleagues. So for me, I've got to get up to speed on all goings on. So for my part, I've, I've met with Mr. Plaskin, um, I've tried to facilitate his involvement. I think our city has been responsive to, uh, his, uh, being involved, because I think they see him as a leader in this area, and someone that they can work with. So I, I don't fundamentally understand the, the sort of anathema, or the, uh, and, uh, animus towards studying. Um, sometimes studying is bad, because it is, um, a way to avoid a, a decision. But I think in this case, it will be the way to do it, and I see that I'm over time. So I'm gonna come back maybe on a second time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, Councilwoman, oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Delgado.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, more and more for Jeff. Thanks, Carrie, great to see you as well. Um, you know, it's, it's a lot of my colleagues' comments already. I think this is, um, as frustrating as it is, and as many studies as we've done, and as much dust as, as they've collected on our shelves, I think this is basically our, our, our last one. And the reason I say our last one is because it also makes sense that, just because of what my colleague, Mr. Reese here, um, who's maybe the set with you, with us the least amount of time, has contributed more than many of us on this, on this council. Um, but Jeff, what I, what I, what I'd like to kinda hear from you also is that, um, as part of the study, we understand that, and to Kai and everyone else, is that, uh, what's needed are protected bicycle lanes, right? I mean, that's essential. We all know that we could put shared lanes, but essentially, the community is not gonna come out, our kids and so forth. Studies and studies upon studies have shown, right, that, uh, people are not gonna feel safe going on shared streets unless they are more of a, a senior rider. And so that's one of the big pushes why Councilwoman Jordan and I, years ago, said we need to do something. And that's why the Center Street project has always been part of the conversations, always comes down to studies. It also comes down to other priorities in our community. Doesn't mean that it hasn't moved forward, uh, with 30% of the time, but things have also changed. We also see a huge amount of student housing now coming to play, and those are our, our conversations we've had early on, as early as 2012, about bringing, uh, the university south, uh, across, across the bridge, as part of the Tassera Project. Now, we're seeing Harris turn residential, all these components that weren't essentially part of the conversations earlier with these other studies. And so this really kinda brings, makes sense that, hey, you know what, things have changed on the spot, let's do it right, to your, to what you said on the, on your presentation. And I think it makes total sense. It makes total sense. Of course, as someone, and both Councilwoman Jordan and I champions as part of Center Street, does it kill us that it's still setting a little bit longer? It makes sense, though, for it to sit just a little bit longer, make sure we do it right, and really look at the corridor of Virginia, look at Center Street, to make sure we bring all those students and tourists and everyone else, from the university down to, down to Midtown, uh, in, in the right way, in the safest way. And also in consideration of possibly Center Street. So, I'm going down the list, saying, yeah, it's gonna maybe take a few more months, but it makes sense with all the large amount of density coming downtown, and really fulfilling the vision that we all set forward early on in 2012, as part of the UNR Downtown Master Plan, and saying, we know this is what we wanna see. We wanna see these small businesses, we wanna see energy taking place and is happening in front of us. And, and that's, I get the shout-out. I get the shout, I get the shout-out. Um, but thank you, great presentation. Started off with that picture, and we even, as part of that picture, uh, seeing the, the silver blue, right? I mean, that's, that's kinda bringing the essence of a lot of the changes that are going on downtown. So, thank you, Jeff, good job.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Doerr?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Weber, and then I think we'll go back to Councilwoman Breckis.
All right. Um, couple points. Um, this 30% design on the cyclotron. So usually, when you get to 30% design, that's when you identify issues. So whether, whether this project's gonna work, same on the pool. You're, you're doing a preliminary design, you're analyzing the environment. I, I personally think that if issues are being found, RTC or us, that that should come back, and we should be made aware of those issues, so we can appropriately address them. I don't think it should just be sort of a, a talk with, without coming to us. Number two, um, again, I'm gonna go back to Midtown. When we did the Midtown study, RTC was doing Midtown, and they were also doing north, up by the university. And I asked numerous times, what about downtown? I mean, why are we looking at every part of Virginia except downtown? And, and I think I heard later, at some point, but this project was just about Midtown and, and the UNR area. So maybe now is the later. But here's my concern, and it kinda relates to something the mayor said. Where I get concerned is when RTC would be doing a placemaking study. So to me, places about, are about places. And RTC is about transportation and moving from place to place. And so what I wanna be sure about is that we're kind of in the driver's seat, that, that experts on planning and placemaking are doing this study, not, it's not all about, where do we put buses? You know, do you see?
The, the, the city of Reno is the lead on this. So from a placemaking perspective, it is us, we'll be choosing the consultant team that comes and engages with this work. I mean, we will rely on RTC on the technical side of things, and, you know, receive their plans for that portion, and that can be integrated into the placemaking study, but
So to the mayor's point, if there's elements that we could, we do not like, it should be coming back to the council for discussion, because it's our downtown. It can't be all about making Virginia Street a travel corridor.
We're in the driver's seat, no pun intended.
Yeah. Or the bicycle seat, the driver of the bike, whatever. But, but, but that's really important to me, is who we hire. Are we hiring transportation experts as our consultant? Or are we hiring people that do have that planning background, similar to Councilmember Breckis? You know, in other words, people that, and beyond, what she knows, like actually experts in this field, not the field of transportation per se. Yes, that would be good. So, and, and I misspoke earlier, I, I don't know what I was thinking, but when I said about the Midtown, I said we were looking at Center Street going north, and it was Forest and Haskell, I misspoke, uh, going south. And what I'd really like to know is, where is RTC on that? Like, that's a critical component that goes along with Midtown, is how do bikes intersect. And the idea there was, if you wanna go fast, go on those streets, but if you wanna join a Midtown, come in on a side street, and maybe walk your bike on that block, you know, park your bike on that block on down, on Virginia or a, a nearby street, if you wanna visit Midtown. So I'll stop now, but you get my concerns, is getting the right people involved, making sure it's all vetted with this council, and understanding where RTC is on both the cyclotron and the Midtown North-South.
Okay. Thank you. And, and I think to your point, one of the things is, I think, having it be user-friendly is so critical, because that, we've seen experts, and also they, I've seen them get it wrong. So user-friendly, and you're seeing it through every business model, the, whenever one thing they, they wanna say is, is it user-friendly? Because if it's not, people are not going to use this, period. I mean, that has gotta be, you know, first and foremost, I think. And that's why I was saying, I want to have people at the table, you know, what do you call your group now?
Trucking Meadows Bike Alliance.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it's gotta be that way, that those guys are really shaping the way that we build this infrastructure in the city. But I also wanna remind everyone, I don't want it to just be one area, and everyone goes, oh yeah, that's a great part of the city for cycling. We need, and, and here's the thing, I was vehemently opposed to doing another study, until I kind of got dug in and, and really kinda heard why. And I was, I was excited, because I thought we could expand on it, like I said, to Sierra. But I also really believe in making this entire city known for great cycling infrastructure. And that's what I, I really don't like when we piecemeal. And I've seen that happen before. And again, I think, you know, Midtown's got a lot of great things to it, but there are some things that I think we so missed it. So it's, I, to me, I want it to see it all over the city, not in just, oh yeah, they got it right here, you know. Um, go ahead, Councilwoman Weber.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to, um, chime in and, and say that your presentation was awesome. All of my colleagues have said great things, and, um, appreciate our staff. But I also wanna say thank you to, um, our members, our RTC, um, representatives, and Councilman Delgado, and Councilwoman Reese, I mean, Councilwoman Jarden. Having you on RTC has been wonderful, because you reach out and you look at all of these things. And I just appreciate their service as well. So, thank you.
All right. Going back to Councilwoman Breckis, uh, I let you go 30 over, so go ahead.
Yeah, and you did, and you just spoke for a minute, too. So I'm gonna ask that you not cut me off, and let me have
Wait a minute, Councilwoman Breckis, this is why I do this, because I wanna make sure everyone gets their questions in.
Okay.
And I always come back to you, and I always give you that respect.
I know.
So go right ahead.
I know. You said you were gonna be tight on time limits, because people have to be places today. But I wanted to have a chance to ask my questions. Ms. Koski, I have a question for you. Um, you're at 30%, taking off on misdoers, or RTC's at 30%, taking off on misdoers' questions. Have issues been identified, and is this project on a design pause currently, or pending this decision today?
So, Carrie Koski, your city engineer, um, to answer the first, first part of your question, Councilwoman, the, uh, the project, we have identified some issues with the project. And those issues, um, as you all know, whenever we convert a roadway, we have, in a, in a, in a, in a, um, an urban setting where the right-of-way is, is already established, we've got, um, we've got choices to make. And some of the issues that we've come up with is the parking. Um, we have realized, through the preliminary design, that we're gonna lose 80 parking spots. 25 of those will be in Midtown. Now, if you all remember, the, 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 uh, the discussions that we had in Midtown, losing one parking spot was devastating to the businesses. So, we have, um, 25 of those spots. We've got 55 spots that we'll be losing in the downtown area. Another item of concern is the loading zones. Several businesses will lose their loading zones. The Pioneer Center will lose its loading, loading zone. The Cal-Neva will lose its loading zone. Um, we will lose a loading zone on the ballroom. Um, some of the other, two of the other items are the delays in the traffic.
You know what? I don't get a lot of time here, so I'm gonna cut you off. Um, I, I wish that we had this item in front of us today. I really, I really, and we don't set the agenda. I don't even have the privilege of putting an item on if the manager doesn't agree. But I wish we had this item. Because it seems like in a vacuum now, we're looking at Virginia Street. I have questions for operations on how Virginia Street, um, works, and maybe, uh, Mr. Dietrich is the best to ask? Mr. Dietrich?
So what, so I just wanted to add
No, I don't wanna use my time, because I will be cut up. Maybe another member could use your time.
Madam Mayor, point of privilege, I, I cannot handle the cutting off of our staff. Councilmember Breckis may ask for additional time from the body, but to treat our staff so poorly is not acceptable to me. Ms. Koski, I'm sorry for Ms. Breckis's rudeness to you. I know you are a consummate professional, but this should not be tolerated.
I'm sorry that it, my, being, you know, I, I feel like I'm in a, a sticky spot here of my time allowances, and I did not mean any offense to you. Obviously, my colleague feels that I've been offending you. I just, you answered my questions satisfactorily, that there are issues. I'd like to know more about those issues. I wish I had that as an item before us. But I'd like to ask Mr. Dietrich about how Virginia Street functions. What is the design speed, and have you, um, have you tubed that to know what the actual design is up there?
Uh, for the record, Kurt Dietrich, city traffic engineer, the design speed of Virginia Street is 25.
Okay, from the bridge, okay. So let me ask you, when we designed Midtown, and the decision was to not put bike lanes there, it was because the design speed was really gonna work for bikes to be at pace with the vehicle speed. Does your sense that bicycles can work at design speed on current Virginia Street design, just like they do over on Mid, Midtown design, or the, the theory was?
Uh, so I have to defer to our, our city engineer, but I believe
Okay.
For Midtown, uh, that there was actually right-of-way constraints for bicyclists? I'm not sure if that's correct.
Carrie Koski, your city engineer, yes, there was right-of-way constraints on the, on, in Midtown. And we were, if you recall, the purpose was to get the university students to Midtown, correct? Um, and that, that was the goal. So when we put in the bike lanes in the Midtown area, we had those right-of-way constraints that I was talking about earlier. So we had to make choices at that time.
Okay. Just in summary, I recall that there was a flow of traffic issue through Midtown, that bicycles would adequately be able to pace themselves with the flow of vehicular traffic through that stretch of Virginia Street. My question is, is there an analysis that the current operations on the downtown stretch of Virginia Street work for bicycles in the flow of traffic?
There is not a current analysis. We are working with the RTC to do a post-analysis of all the traffic right now, within the Midtown area. Um, and what we're doing is we're studying, we're studying exactly that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, and I just wanted on the record that, um, I allowed Councilwoman Breckis to have the most time to speak on this issue. So I, I want that on there, because I think there's always this perception, I'm trying to cut you off, and I'm not. So I just wanna be fair to all the council members up here, so they get their questions in. Um, I do want a broader discussion on this, because I really wanna understand exactly what our vision is, where we're, where we're going with this. Um, because I think that that is so important, the way that we're going to forever sort of live within this infrastructure. Go ahead, Carrie, come on up.
Carrie Koski, your city engineer, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, and absolutely, as your staff, we will be bringing back whatever comes out of the, um, the study. And we will be bringing back a design to this body for approval before we go forward with any commitments.
Do you have any working group?
Um, yes, we do. Uh, thank you for the question. And we have started working with the, um, the Bicycle Alliance, um, just recently, well, not recently, the last three months. We have been working, RTC and, um, the Timber Group, we've been meeting and discussing this very issue.
Okay. And I, honestly, this has gotta be so city-driven, and so user-driven. I mean, everything about it, because I do think we could have a really big opportunity here. But you and I have had so many conversations about cycling infrastructure. I mean, you guys, honestly. Um, and that also gives me so much more confidence, because I know you're amazing at what you do, but we also have a passion for this. You and I both do. So I wanna say thank you so much, Carrie. And also to our staff, I, um, wanna apologize, because I know sometimes there's been talk that it is very difficult to come to council. And I never want that to be the perception here. I want us to always have an open door, and you guys feel comfortable. I, I hate that now there's sort of this feeling that they, people have this intimidation and anxiety when they come to council, and that should never be. So I wanna apologize personally. So I appreciate you guys, because I know how hard you work. All right, Councilwoman Jarden.
Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Limber, could you bring up that one bubbles, uh, circles with all of the community members that will be involved as part of this process? Obviously, first selecting whoever the urban design folks will be, and then they will drive the process. Um, I thought that was probably the most significant slide of all. This, to me, spoke volumes. And to Madam Mayor's point, um, the issues about the different groups, which you will pull from prior studies, we, we don't need to recreate a wheel if there's already some base already some base level of information that we can build, build upon. This is something that I think we've gotten a little bit sidetracked today. This is super exciting, folks. This is exciting. And thank you, RTC, for giving us, City of Reno, money to do our study. Hey, thank you, RTC. Appreciate you participating and Reno is the lead, 100% on this. This is, this is something that I think we have been, this is the piece of the puzzle that we have been missing, envisioning what, what Reno looks like for our future, what, how it functions, how each piece that we move involves another piece and, and what it, what, what do we as a council value most for our visioning of our future? And this, to me, is gonna bring the stakeholders together and all the great voices. And I just feel like our conversation today went a little bit to the negative side when this is such a positive thing and it's gonna be, you know, a six-month, approximately a six-month study, and I think it's so well worth it. And again, to staff, Carrie, I, I haven't seen a project that you've been involved with that you don't involve in the most respectful and professional way every possible stakeholder. Look to our Virginia Street Bridge, folks. You know how to do it right. You know how to involve the people, hear their voices, but you're also very honest about where some fatal flaws may be. And, but, understanding those upfront, to Councilwoman Breckis's point, let's just have RTC give a presentation on the status of things.
Yeah.
We talk about it as a council and that'd be a separate item. Madam Mayor, I don't see the clock ticking and I certainly don't want to go over my time in respect to my fellow colleagues. So, and I saw Councilmember Delgado has his sanitizer bottle up.
Oh, sorry.
So, I will, I'll defer. I just wanted to say this is, this is an exciting opportunity for us and I'm, I'm excited to get it going.
All right, so is that your motion?
Well, I don't know if Councilmember Delgado had something to say.
No, you're good. Just let's vote, let's get this going.
Thank you very much. And again, to everybody involved, so excited. Madam Mayor, I move to approve item D1.
All right, and I would just like the caveat in there because I just, I think this is really, really exciting, but what I do want to see is that staff come back once a month with progress. I want to know, like, where we're at, because I want to, I, I hate to say micromanage this, but I want to, like, really just see us, you know, stay completely on track, but also I want to be able to expand on sort of the attractions and the things that we can get out of this. Like, that is super important to me because I think this is the opportunity to make it not just about this one area. I think, I really want to see something truly focused, but then we follow that vision because you and I have talked about that. I think this is finally the opportunity because if we don't, then people sort of poo-poo the other things that we want to do when it comes to cycling. And that's what I hate because it feels like it gets done like this. And that's why I really want to see this be super broad so we can focus all of Reno. Again, I want people to say, wow, Reno's a great city that understands cycling infrastructure, for sure. Because there were some tough, tough things to get done here, you know, I mean, way before I was on the council, but one of the things, you know, when I was like, we gotta have, I, I would love to see green bike lanes throughout the whole thing, but I'm told that that's not really a thing, but I do like the green, you know, those things like that. But, anyway, so thank you so much, Carrie. Okay.
Second.
I have a, a motion and a second.
Madam Mayor, if I can, just spurred something up is, this is, it's important to, to your point earlier, it's giving opportunities to communities that don't necessarily, it's easier to do in the newer parts of town, it's always harder to do things in our urban core, right? So, always gonna run into impacts no matter what. And so, I think that's why, another reason why this is an important study, to go a little bit more and be thoughtful about that process. But also, to want to put back on your guys' thoughts is, Audi Wells is moving forward and that's gonna be a huge project to connect Pyramid all the way down to the Wells Bridge. And that's a huge multimodal opportunity for so many of the families and kids that are not just your, your, you know, your big senior riders, but also just your casual kids going from, from the store, you know, or going to school or going from parks. And so, it's, it's already in process, it's not, this isn't, but it's, but what's, what is gonna be new for us is the really urban core impacts and making sure that we do it right, so.
And I, I just want to, out there on the record, since we're talking about the motion, Ms. Kosky, I also really want, this one's a big one for me, is along the river. Cycling along the river, because I think that can be a tremendous attribute. So, that included in, along there, we can build some great cycling all the way through there. People could literally bike to work. And, you know, like, you see it in Europe, they do it a lot, so. Anyway, so I'm trying to think of every little muck and cranny we can, we can bike, but certainly along the river.
Can I weigh in for one second?
Yes, please.
Don't forget the North Valleys and Ward 4 because they've always wanted to be connected to downtown.
Yes.
There you go.
Yes, that's exactly right. And there's your guy to get it done. Hi. Right? Because you could do, because you've got so much up there. All right, anyway, Councilwoman Reese, go ahead and then I'll go to Councilwoman Breckis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be supporting the motion because I believe it is the important time to take stock of what needs to get done. At the end of the day, though, I want to address my staff to comments and perhaps even extend it out to the staff at RTC. I, I am someone who believes very passionately that we must make our communities more bike-friendly and safe, in whatever way we can, whether that is concrete barriers, dedicated lanes, paint on the ground, anything that we can do to make this community more bicycle-friendly, I believe we should be doing. And so, I just want people to understand that my goal in approving the study is not to delay, it's not some conspiracy theory about what the row wants, because I quite frankly don't know that, other than being a constituent and a stakeholder, that they will have a lot to, of input or say in the process. I believe that this is an opportunity to take stock of where we are, the changing environment downtown, and to make ultimately the best decision. And my hope is that what comes out of the study is more opportunities for bicyclists to use this community and for the changing nature of our consumption patterns around automobile use to be addressed. And so, again, I thank the staff for the time that went into making the presentation and for answering my myriad of questions offline and for, especially Ms. Bryant, who is actually, because our connection is through the city manager's office, who has been the first to receive my many phone calls and inquiries and to sit with me and explain to me the intricacies of bicycling in this community. And so, Ms. Bryant deserves a lot of the credit for facilitating that. She's very quiet at times and won't take any credit, but I do appreciate her work in making sure that our community is being heard and that folks in the bicycling community have a voice and say in what we're doing. And, and again, much of that, from my perspective, through the work that I've been engaged in, is because of Ms. Bryant. So, thank to all staff and specifically to her.
All right, Councilwoman Breckis.
Yeah, I won't be supporting the motion. I, I think there's a real problem going on and we're in a project, we should focus with that project and narrow in on what the issues are. And instead, what we do is, we do a lot of lip service to wanting to be safer on the streets, multimodal, but if we can't narrow in on a project that we need to look at specifically when it's under design, we're just not getting there. And I think the bicycling community knows that we're not getting there and we're not progressing. And I don't know that people who, on this body or others, recognize the growing fear that the cycling community has about how unsafe our streets are. They are becoming increasingly unsafe, there's been some visible, some very high-profile tragic deaths. And we, particularly in the urban core, are just not making the right steps. And I think what we're doing instead is pivoting, instead of focusing where we are, which is an implementation stage. And I also think the, the focus of this Virginia concept is wrong. If, if we have problems and we decide we have problems with Center Street as we've gone forward on the path, we should revisit the whole downtown transportation circulation study. That's what should be in front of us today and not this corridor concept. So, I, I really am struggling with it. And the corridor concept wants to talk about economics and other issues, which I think is not a transportation project. It's a, we're, we're really, I think, setting this up for more failure and it really is, in my view, a microcosm why we're not making the steps and there is a growing fear in the cycling community that it's very dangerous out there. And it is so out of step with communities that are doing a very good job in their urban environments and we are not. So, I'm not gonna support this, but I do hope that very soon, next agenda, what's going on in Center Street, all these points that Ms. Kosky raised, the memos maybe, the process is, is before us at our very next meeting. But I won't support this, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
All right, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Jordan, go ahead. Thank you very much. I, I guess I, I feel compelled a little bit to respond to my colleague and the, that somehow this is an anti-cycling move in any part. And I, I do believe when we have RTC come back and, and in concert with the city's presentations, that we remind all colleagues of all the things we have done as it relates to multimodal transportation and cycling in our community and ways in which we can continue to expand and support that. I think, you know, the work we've done at RTC speaks to that and I just think they're not here today to, to kind of expound on that, so I think that's important. And I think some of the growing fear might be self-generated by some on this body to instill that sort of fear and promote it in sort of conspiratorial, scary ways. And then we end up spending our time here today trying to set the record straight and defend what's true, what's not true and what's actual. So, some of our, some of our own problems are internally generated and I hope the public sees that, so, thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Okay, so I had a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I oppose.
Carrie's, thank you. Okay, I need you guys to take a break. I need you to get lunch and I need you to stretch and come back feeling a little revived.
And Madam Mayor, I think we have attorney-client.
Oh, we have attorney-client? Okay, so we will do that. And then, what time are we coming back, Mr. Manager?
1:30 or something. Okay.
Okay, two, let's go to 2 o'clock then. We'll see you back.
Thank you.
I am, I'm so sorry, I thought we started.
That's okay, we had some technical things were going on, but we're all set. So, we are reconvening at 2:04.
Okay, sounds good, thank you so much.
And we are on item D2, which is a presentation for federal fiscal years 21, 22, RTC.
Okay, all right.
Good afternoon.
Ms. Kosky, nice to see you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. We're very excited today to bring to you this presentation for the Transportation Alternatives Call for Projects. So, I have a team here that's been working very hard on this to bring you the projects today. Khalil Wilson, our engineering manager in Capital Projects, he's gonna go ahead and give the presentation. Kurt Dietrich is here, our traffic engineer, to help support any questions we might have at the end of the presentation. And I want to recognize Katie Harrison, she's also been very instrumental in putting this together. So, I won't belabor that and I'll turn it over to Khalil.
Thank you, I love that you recognize your team. And just really quickly, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Madam Mayor, we have none registered.
Okay, great. Take it away, it's all you.
You guys hear me okay? My name is Khalil Wilson, Engineering Manager for Capital Projects, for the record. I'm here to present Transportation Alternatives, or TA Set Aside Program for federal fiscal years 21, 22. We'll take it through a brief background of the TA Set Aside Program as a whole and in the project selection process. Then I'll also present two locations, provide some details for the project candidates for council consideration, and then make a staff recommendation of which one to move forward for the application. The TA Set Aside Program, our federal funds from the Federal Highways Administration that provides money to the states to, for alternative transportation projects to help improve communities. The RTC administers the TA Set Aside Program for our local metropolitan area and they anticipate this year to receive $805,000 for the combined federal fiscal year of 21, 22. Only eligible sponsors may apply for the funding. Those include local governments, public resources and land agencies, school districts and tribal governments. Eligible sponsors or agencies in our case can only submit one application per year for consideration. The program would provide funding up to 95% of the project cost, what the agency required to provide a minimum 5%. Applications this year are due, are due to RTC October 1st, 2021. A little bit about the selection process, after the projects are submitted to RTC, they are scored and evaluated by RTC and scored. The project scoring are separated into three major categories, the project benefit, equity and environmental justice, and project readiness. These scored projects are then presented to the RTC advisory committees and the committee to make their final recommendation for RTC Board approval. When the RTC Board approves the projects, the local agencies are notified of the approval. This year, selected projects would go into construction in the years of '23 and '24. There is goals associated with this project. To be an eligible TA Set Aside Project, you must benefit the general public as a whole and demonstrate the relationship to five performance goals established by the FHWA. These include improvement safety on roadways, encouraging non-motorized travel, expand bicycle infrastructure, improve access to jobs, schools and buses, and reduce emissions and energy use. As an example of these programs, these projects in the past, in 2019, the TA Set Aside Project funded the purchase of speed radar signage and rectangular flashing beacons, crosswalk devices. These pedestrian enhancement devices were installed in various locations throughout Reno. In 2018, a project was funded to install the multi-use path on Peckham Avenue, connecting Airway Drive to Longley, where no pedestrian infrastructure currently exists. This project not only improves safety on roadways, it encourages non-motorized travel and expands the bicycle infrastructure and improves the overall access to transit and jobs. As an added benefit for these projects, once, once you install projects that encourage non-motorized travel, you have the added benefit of reduced, reduction in emissions and energy use. Although very small, every little bit counts. In addition to the identifying the goals, there's also ineligible uses. They include items like administrative purposes, promotional activities, routine maintenance operations or general parks and rec facilities installation. We're here to talk about the project candidates. Staff evaluated several locations throughout the city, have it narrowed down to two proposed projects, East 6th Street and Lake Street Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacon, or RRFB, and the Urban Road and Pluma Street Sidewalk. Several other project locations were evaluated, both these two projects are in conformance with the project goals, eligible criteria, and have the potential for the highest ranking for the RTC project review. Other projects that were evaluated and considered were not selected for candidates because, one, they did not high rank with the criteria, they're already included in RTC Regional Transportation Improvement Plan, or they've been submitted for other grant opportunities. The first project you can see here is the Rectangular Flashing Beacon Project, or RRFB. The yellow dot there in the center is the location of the intersection between I-80 and the Truckee River. This intersection between 2015 and 2017 reported 14 crashes, four involving pedestrians. As a result, it became a high priority for the traffic engineer for, for safety enhancements. Installation of this RFB will also support the increasing need for pedestrian activity connecting to the university to the north and to the south, the event center, Greater Nevada Field, RTC bus terminal, 4th Street Bus Terminal and the Truckee River. What we would, what we're proposing is to install a traffic type single that the mastarm would go span over 6th Street and put pedestrian buttons on the north side and the south side of 6th Street that are pedestrian activated, notifying vehicular traffic that pedestrians are about, enter the, into the roadway. This project is, has an estimated cost of $250,000 and would, would meet the, the administration goals of improved safety on roadways. At this point in the presentation, I'd like to turn it over to Kurt Dietrich, our, our traffic engineer, to talk a little bit more about rapid flashing, rectangular rapid flashing beacons.
Right, good afternoon, Kurt Dietrich, City Traffic Engineer, for the record. So, anytime that we receive assistance requests regarding pedestrian safety at a, at a crosswalk location and marked crosswalk location, we do evaluate for an RFB system. So, the RFB systems are not fully approved by the FHWA, but it's currently a, a tool as an interim measure. So, right now, there's no warrants associated with the RFBs, but there are currently best practices. And so, the best practices are based on the width of the right-of-way, vehicular volumes and speed. So, based on those three factors- volumes, and speed. So based on those three factors, at this particular intersection, it's considered a candidate per the FHWA guidance. And so what really kicked this location over is just the number of crashes that we had. As Khalil mentioned, we had 12 crashes at this intersection, most notably four pedestrian crashes within a three-year period. We had not considered this... Actually, a question came in whether we need to upgrade this intersection to a traffic signal at this time. A question came to staff on that. So we had not considered this for a traffic signal, primarily because there's no connectivity between this intersection and the university. There's no bridge structure currently across I-80. And then additionally, the FHWA, for a traffic signal crash warrant, recommends an adequate trial of alternative measures first. And so based on that, and based on the previous guidance, an RRFB would be a good item for this particular location. So turn it back over to Khalil.
All right. Good job. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kurt. Khalil Wilson, again, for the record, Engineering Manager in Capital Projects for the record. Our second... The other project under for consideration today is the Urban Road and Pluma Street Sidewalk Project. You can see there on our map, it's the area highlighted in pink is the scope. This project would add sidewalk where none currently exist on Urban Road from Arlington Avenue to Pluma Street, and on the west side of Pluma Street, beginning at Urban Road, and connecting to existing sidewalk adjacent to the Reno Tennis Center, opposite of Mountain View Drive in the middle of the map. The city has received numerous requests from the public via Reno Direct, email, and phone calls to install sidewalk connectivity in the area of Urban and Plumas. This project would satisfy these requests, not only satisfy the request for this connectivity, but also connect the Arlington and Skyline Neighborhood to public transit on Plumas and other public amenities like the Reno Tennis Center. I'd like to point out, this past July, an agreement was brought forward to this body and approved by council for Tennis Nation Racquet Sports to operate at the Reno Tennis Center year-round. As a result, the city staff anticipates only an increase in pedestrian activity and the need for this pedestrian connectivity. This proposed project is also in alignment with the city's ADA Transition Plan, where projects are identified to fill gaps in the sidewalk connectivity to improve safe and accessible pedestrian routes. It would serve to provide an ADA accessible to locations with high pedestrian, high-volume generators like transit and recreation facilities. Lastly, I'd like to draw your attention to the center of the screen with the yellow circle. That's an existing RR, our Rectangular Flashing Beacon Crosswalk. This is the only pedestrian-activated crosswalk between Plum and Moana. To get a little more sense of the project, I'll provide a couple renderings for council. The photo on the left is standing at Arlington on Urban looking east, showing the sidewalk installation along the south side of the roadway adjacent to the Washoe County Golf Course. The photo on the right is on Urban looking south, showing sidewalk along the Plumas, stretching from Urban all the way to the existing sidewalk adjacent to the Reno Tennis Center. This project is an estimated cost of $600,000, and supports improved safety on roadways, access to bus, public buses, jobs, public facilities, and it also encourages non-motorized travel.
When would that start?
Excuse me?
Do you have a timeline on that?
On this project?
Yeah.
That's what we're here for today, because we would submit these applications to RTC for the TA Set Aside Program.
Okay.
In summary, both these projects that I brought forth to you today are within the... meet the project program goals and have the potential for the highest scores. However, only one project can move forward for the application. Recently, staff has confirmed from RTC that there's a program project for '23, '24 that includes bicycle and safety improvements on Sixth Street from Virginia to Fourth. With council support, we could request RTC to include the scope of work for the RRFB pedestrian enhancement for Lake and Sixth. So as far as a staff recommendation, for council to approve the selection of the Urban Road and Pluma Street Sidewalk Project to submit for federal fiscal year 21, 22, and for city staff to request that RTC include the RRFB project at Sixth and Lake in the scope of the work for the East Sixth Street Safety Improvements Program for federal fiscal year '23, '24.
Okay. That's awesome. Good job. Love it. I'm glad you're like, oh, that's over.
A little, yeah.
A little. I thought you did great.
Good job.
Great job. Okay. We're going to send it back to the body for discussion. Just, I guess to my point, what I was trying to say, okay, if we approve this today, what would the timeline be to get to doing that project?
Understood. Projects that are approved for this year would go to construction in the year '23, '24.
'23, '24.
Yes.
And is it just for the sidewalk along the golf course?
Yes. That area highlighted in pink was the area for the scope.
Can you show us that again?
Can I get the presentation back up, please? Yes, the area highlighted in pink.
Oh, it goes like this and not like this?
Yeah. The area highlighted in green is a future consideration project to connect the sidewalk from the Reno Tennis Center to existing sidewalk opposite of Brinkby, to finish it out. But that's not under consideration at this time.
And, okay. I'm going to ask a question of why. You know, why would we not just do the whole piece?
So we wanted to limit the scope to a point that we could maximize the amount of funding availability that we could get.
So we're kind of... But we're sort of doing another project.
5% of 600,000 is 30,000?
That's correct. But we may not receive 100% of funding for the project. The project goes for other candidates that get first election, like City of Sparks, Washoe County, and tribal agencies, such School District.
Uh-huh. That makes sense. But I've got to say, I've always thought that, why is there not a sidewalk like that?
I know.
It's so obvious. It's like, super obvious.
It's really obvious. So I have a couple questions.
Sure.
So the other one, though, that's in the plan for RTC to do on Sixth Street, that would be paid 100% because that's an RTC project?
It's not currently in the scope of work for that project. We were going to ask RTC to include it.
Got it.
And then to expand the scope.
But they were going to do crossings.
Yes, they were going to do crossings. Yes.
Yeah. But I mean, that's awesome, that that would be 100%.
Correct.
If we got that included. We still have to come up with our 5%, but I'm going to ask you guys, 30,000 is not that much. I mean, if they fund the whole 600. But are you saying they might only fund 400,000 or something?
That is a possibility.
Okay, and the rest would fall to us?
Yes.
Okay. One more question. One of the reasons I think, first of all, there's many reasons this is a great project, the one you have up. They both are. But this one happens to be in my ward, but it is...
Particularly because it's in your ward.
Well, there's that. But the thing is that this is a, you know, a city-county facility. You've got the county golf course, which lots of people are using. You've got the tennis. One of the things is just parking. I think that to use the tennis, where do people park?
To use the tennis center?
Yeah.
It's my understanding mostly they use the parking lot that's there, and if it's not available...
When you say "there."
I'm sorry. Adjacent to the tennis courts.
But is that the one that's at the white buildings, the parking?
Yes.
And to my knowledge, correct me, please, there's no sidewalk?
No, there is sidewalk.
There's a path?
There is a path along the frontage of Plumas that was installed in 2014 with the RTC road diet that provides the crossing across Plumas. So there is sidewalk along Plumas. Are you saying the connection between the parking lot and the tennis courts from the parking lot?
That is what I'm saying.
I don't know the answer to that. I'll have to get it back to you.
Do you know, Carrie?
Carrie Kosky, you're City Engineer. Yes, there is sidewalk that connects inside of the facility.
Internally.
Internally to the sidewalk that is adjacent to Pluma Street.
Got it. Okay. So, but to get there, they have to walk in dirt?
Correct. This project would make that connection.
Yeah. Okay. I'm really excited about it. I've had so many comments from people all over the city about this place. To your point, Mayor, like, why is there no sidewalk here? The other question I have is, who would actually do the project? Would the grant come to us, or would RTC do it?
Carrie Kosky, you're City Engineer. The grant would come to us. So we would most likely design this in-house with our in-house staff, and then we would put out a contract for the construction.
And if I may have, and it looks like I have 25 seconds. My big question, of course, is trees. So there are some tight areas where there's huge, I believe there are elms, huge elm trees that are doing pretty well. One or two has passed away. But it can get really tight, and so there may have to be a berm, something to keep the trees going, but still build the sidewalk. And I just want to make sure that we're very cognizant of that, that we don't go in and cut down these trees, that we figure it out, like you guys did an amazing job in the Old Southwest.
Absolutely. We are going to save the trees.
I would hate to be the one that said, oh, yeah, let's do this sidewalk. And then, as a result, oh, here went 10 trees that are literally about 100 years old. So what do you have a thought?
Yes, we've been tossing around some ideas. And fortunately, there's enough room between the tennis courts themselves and the back of the curb that we figure that we can probably meander the sidewalk.
Oh, great.
And make accommodations for the trees.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Well done.
Who... Oh, Councilman Reese, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wilson, thank you so much for the presentation. I thought it was outstanding. It's always nice to see you in the chambers. And it's, I guess, for the staff, it's nice to see a lot of the work being shared. And we love hearing from you. And so it's always nice. Hopefully, it won't be the last time. I also thought the presentation was very easy for me to understand, because quite frankly, when the first time I had a pass on understanding what the TA Set Aside was, it sort of felt like a Hunger Games, right? We know there's very limited money available for some of the projects. We have more capital projects than we will ever have the funding to do, unfortunately, I think. And so being able to evaluate it sort of fairly with the criteria that you identified, I think that's the key for me, is that, you know, we understand that we're competing for a small pool of money against other potential persons who are also trying to compete for those grants. So as we winnow it down, this project on Urban and Plumas seems to be a very natural fit for many of our master plan, you know, sort of aspirational goals and for the connectivity. So I'm excited to see this part. I, myself, have been a tennis player and played there for many years. It is very odd, because it's like a stretch of about, you know, maybe less than 100 feet where there is some curbing and guttering. But then it's disconnected. It's not connected to anything on either side, quite frankly. So for this project, I think it's a very good one. My hope is ultimately that we'll find a way to do the part in green on your map, and also that the county might stand with us and do the wraparound from ultimately Plumas along Moana to the west that reaches all the way up to the Skyline area and what is up above there, because I think there's another part of this that's just off the map that is very important to the ultimate connectivity progress. But we, you know, we take it in bites, right? We're going to start with this one. We're going to hope for a future phase. We're going to, I hope, ask the county or anyone else who'd participate about what I'll call Phase 3, which is coming around that corner and up Moana. So I think there's great stuff. Hopefully, ultimately, what happens, too, is that the RTC and to my colleagues who do the work over there, I know it is a significant amount of work. And so seeing it come to fruition through that process lets me know that once it comes to you, that you know that that Sixth and Lake portion is part of the extremely important safety work that you're doing over there each time. And so hopefully, both projects ultimately come to pass. So again, thank you to your team for the hard work that you put in to get it here today. And I am supportive of the recommendations that you posited in the last slide. I also think those slides are very helpful, too. These are new pieces of what we're seeing. Obviously, when we have our computers up and we can see the staff recommendations, sometimes the presentations include those. But I like seeing them up here, because then the public is seeing them. So that's a good addition, whoever has made that choice to add those to presentations. Thanks again.
Thank you.
And before you leave, Khalil, and for Mr. Manager, to the mayor. Oh, you want me to put the bottle? Oh, no, I didn't. I am trying to, like, who's got it up?
It looks like Councilman Jordan did.
Councilman Jordan, and I'm going to go to you, Councilwoman Jordan, and then we'll head back down here.
Thank you very much. I was just confirming that that Sixth and Lake is, has been identified as one of the hotspots, for lack of a better term, for pedestrian incidents, correct? That whole area, that whole corridor, how does this tie into the pedestrian safety zone initiative? How does this crosswalk?
For the record, Kurt Dietrich, City Traffic Engineer, glad you asked that question, because actually, as far as pedestrian safety zone that was passed by council previously, this is actually within that corridor.
Okay, so we'll get a flasher and a pedestrian safety zone. Okay.
Correct.
That's fantastic. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Jordan.
One more question, or first a comment for Mr. Thornley and you, really Khalil, which is that I like seeing all the different faces. And I appreciate the fact that we are hearing from you. I presume you will be one of the project managers, or this falls in your area?
Khalil Wilson, for the record, yes, yes, it does fall in our area for Capital Projects, yes.
Okay. Well, I just, I really appreciate that, getting just exposure to more of our staff than, you know, maybe the 10 people that we hear from. And of course, I love hearing from those 10 people, but I really like hearing from people on the ground that are going to do these projects. I really thank you. One final question for me on this project. I've been out there with Mr. Flansburgh and with Mr. Dietrich. And we've been talking about, if you go to the left of the pink, at the pink, where it dead ends on the left, that is right where Arlington and Urban meet. And everybody that is coming south that isn't going to go on a major road pretty much comes this way. Right, come down Arlington from downtown, take the turn on Urban, and so on. So it's a very congested area. And so I'm hoping while we look at it, while, let's say we do get the grant and we move forward, I hope we'll take a close look at that place and see if there's any improvements we can make, because I have been asked over and over by residents in that area who have had to observe crashes, even a death there, as well as just, if you guys look just south of there, where it takes another L, right there, people go super fast. And I've been out there with Mr. Flansburgh and Mr. Dietrich looking at what we can do to slow traffic down. It's just a, it's like a raceway there. And it's so congested that, again, you have, you brought with you numerous examples of accidents right there. Whole guardrails taken out, people hurt, and it's another area where we're very short on sidewalk. You know, either the sidewalk's too narrow, or there's bushes overhanging, or there's, what would you call, sight line issues. So I just, this whole area is very challenging, you know, for being a residential area, not in a downtown. It has its fair share of both pedestrian, bike, and vehicle issues going on. So thank you for bringing it forward. And I'm just, just a note to see if there's some enhancements we can do on our side if this does come forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Becker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So you said that RTC has plans to do the Sixth Street corridor. Where did that concept come out of? Was that the 2019 Downtown Circulation Plan? Did they do a specific corridor plan? I'm just trying to get a grasp on downtown thinking. I mean, I made an argument earlier that maybe we go back to the Downtown Circulation Plan if we're having problems with spot or corridor programs. So I just, you know, new news. Where did that one come from?
I'll defer to the City Engineer for that question.
Okay.
Carrie Kosky, you're City Engineer. Yes, it did come out of the Downtown Circulation Plan. This Downtown Circulation Plan had the Sixth Street and the Ninth Street focus up around the university, and that was included in the 2050 RTP.
Okay. Might be good to get more periodic updates on some of these things, rather than just all of a sudden. In a good presentation, but it's part of this plan. Well, you know, it's really part of the implementation of the plan. And, oh, at any given time, I would like for us to know what's, you know, being implemented out there. So that, but was a four-way stop examined at that? Mr. Dietrich said a traffic signal, but what about a four-way stop? Because I'm really struggling with this concept, that at some point, the urban core is less about moving traffic and more about really safety and a bunch of users. And I feel like we're talking about that concept in isolation and not in, you know, an accepted concept. So what, how'd you look at that spot on Sixth Street for a controlled access?
For the record, Kurt Dietrich, City Traffic Engineer, to be completely honest with you, we had not evaluated that for an all-way stop. It came in as a citizen request for an RRFB. So we looked at it from that approach, to be honest with you.
Yeah. I mean, here's where I thought we were going with the downtown transportation study. I know I'm a little off-topic, was really kind of, we had a value, and that value was, you know, downtown's really not going to be a thorough fare to move a lot of cars to the freeway. It's going to be very multifaceted. It's going to be very multifaceted, supported by the Downtown Action Plan. And so I was kind of looking at the big picture on that. I'll leave that aside. I do support the Urban and Plumas sidewalks, but I just noticed this summer that the county was doing quite a bit of work on that Urban, and I thought surely they're doing the nature of work where it triggers the threshold for sidewalk installation by the adjacent property owner. Why was it, what were they doing? Why wasn't, why wasn't the county required to put in a sidewalk like any other property owner?
Carrie Kosky, your city engineer? The work that the county was doing was, if I remember right, it was just some landscaping work, correct? It was not anything building associated. And that would be, that would trigger the sidewalk work. But we have been in touch with the, the county and they are working with us. We're going to work with them hand in hand throughout this whole process. And quite honestly, they'll be taking over the maintenance of the sidewalk.
Okay, well, I'll have some follow-up questions if we, if I get a chance when we go around. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from council members? There are none. Councilwoman Beckus.
Thank you for staying up there. So the question is, I understand that Watts Street is on the neighborhood program here pretty soon.
Yes.
Is there an ability to assess the county for that? If, if we can't, so as a way to get the whole project done and throw it in as an assessment? Because we do have assessment abilities. We're working in the neighborhood anyway. If they don't put it in as their TAP application, maybe we should just talk about assessing them?
Well, in the Watts Street area, we got a CDBG grant, so there would be no reason to assess people in the Watts Street area. And then, of course, you understand in the other, in the Humboldt area, the residents were, they had a volunteer assessment, so we can't assess them again. So our threshold is, is, I think it's $240,000 for an assessment, something like that. So it wouldn't meet the threshold.
But if you brought the project in that you're planning in the purple, you could assess them.
Possibly, yes.
Yeah. I just, I thought we were going to be more proactive on some of these assessments. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? No? Okay.
I'm going to make a motion.
I was going to send it to you, Councilwoman Dur.
All right. Word two. Yeah, sure. D2, I'd like to recommend the staff recommendation that we have up on our slide, which is to both submit for a project and to request inclusion of a project.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilwoman Dur. I have a second from Councilwoman Jordan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good job. You made it. Great job. All right. Thanks, you guys.
All right, Madam Mayor. With that, we're on item E1 in Ordinance Introduction to be read by the city attorney.
Okay, that's great. We're going to send it over to the ever so famous Carl Hall.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Ordinance Introduction Bill Number 7182, ordinance of the City Council of the City of Reno, amending the redevelopment plan for the downtown project area, RDA1, extending the plan an additional 15 years to 2043, 60 years after the date on which the original redevelopment plan was adopted in accordance with NRS 279.438-1A and NRS 279.0, .608 to facilitate payment of existing debt together with other matters properly relating thereto.
All right, thank you so much. Ma'am Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We have none.
All right, fantastic. Deborah, you want to come on up? I don't know if council has any questions. Does anyone have any questions, Deborah? Councilwoman Beckus.
Yeah. So, and these are a lot of questions that I asked at last week's Redevelopment Agency. What is the purpose of this amendment?
The purpose of this amendment is to extend the redevelopment area by 15 years.
Why?
So that we can pay off the debt and pay back the RDA2 with the cash flow.
The problem is, I don't see that in the plan. So we have a stated action, but it's not referenced in the plan. Does that pose a problem to anyone? Maybe legal? And I'll follow up also with a question of, how can we amend a plan that's already terminated?
Councilmember Beckus, for the record, no, I think this ordinance, the way it's drafted, does what it needs to do, namely extends the redevelopment plan and area for an additional 15 years to facilitate the payment of existing bond debt.
Okay. And then the other question is about the plan process. The NRS states that when you adopt your plan, you have to involve the property owners whose tax is being put off to the tip, presumably the debt payers. But your whereas's in the ordinance say, well, we didn't notice those folks. Why? Because they won't be affected. Why didn't we notice them? And how will they not be affected if their taxes are going to debt payers instead of paying for some of the services I hear folks wanting in that downtown area, like police coverage, street maintenance, that sort of thing?
Again, the situation on the ground and for the property owners remains the same today as it would be years from now. This is existing debt. It doesn't, it, it, it's, it doesn't change their position at all. It doesn't affect their property at all. So there wasn't a need to go back and get that, to have that public hearing.
And if I may, it does not change the amount of tax that each one of those property owners pays. It just changes how those taxes get allocated to the taxing entities.
Yeah, but that translates to services, in my view. And so, you know, when I hear that it's going to pay, do this rather than do this that can pay services that I hear they want, I'm, I'm struggling. But let me ask another question. Is NRS 279, 568 requires conformance of the master plan to the redevelopment plan? We adopted a new master plan in 2017. What analysis of conformity of that master plan to this has occurred?
For the record, John Shipman, none.
Do you think that's a deficiency in amending the plan when you haven't gone through that exercise in the redevelopment law?
No, I do not.
Okay, okay. What about a, a conflict that I'm seeing? Madam Mayor, by all means, please stop me if I've exercised my time.
I am, I'm going to just really quickly.
Oh, okay. One last question then is.
Okay, wait, wait. Really quickly, hold on. Are there any other questions? Okay, and then I'm going to come right back to you. Go ahead. Three minutes. Councilwoman Beckus.
The council gave direction to Manager Thornley to negotiate a development agreement with the Jacobs Entertainment Group under the redevelopment authority and statutes. So we're going to exercise redevelopment power with this development and disposition agreement. We took action for that. That conflicts with what you said, Ms. Lochner, as extending the life just to pay debt. So, I mean, are we doing more? I mean, i- in my view, if the statement you're saying is we're extending it to pay debt, then we're not doing other redevelopment activities. Or are we? What, what, are we going to do more redevelopment activities?
Well, the first issue is dealing with the impending default of the redevelopment debt. And that is what these actions are doing, is strictly to deal with the impending default. So as far as all the, the other actions that are going on, I really can't speak to that because as the finance director, I'm really just dealing with the debt and the pending default. And this was the action that council gave us direction to follow in order to solve that problem.
And you've had negotiations with bondholders on this?
I have not.
Okay. So let me ask another question. And anyone else, staff, please bring in, because I, I think that, I understand what you're doing from the financial side, but obviously we have legal statute we're working with and the whole redevelopment agency. But there's extensive discussion in here about eminent domain powers in this plan. Do we have eminent domain authority under our redevelopment powers? Does anyone know?
So I don't know if that's, this is, again, John Shipman, for the record, I don't know if that, how that pertains to this item, but I would say that on 2008, 2009, the pistol amendment passed that really modified a lot of the way that we do redevelopment in relative to eminent domain. But that's not part and parcel of this item. This item is purely an item to allow for the payment of existing debt.
Well, I'm, I'm hearing one thing and I'm seeing practice as we move forward with the development agreement with Jacobs. So obviously, we're, we're sticking ourselves up to continue to use our redevelopment powers, and we have a redevelopment plan that contemplates eminent domain, condemnation, eminent domain condemnation. And I, I, I want to express to the council how problematic and fearful I find that. Two property owners in the redevelopment plan area who, the only reference point is this plan that talks about eminent domain, that can have a chilling effect upon them to know that they are in the line of condemnation. And I think we should amend the plan, strike that out, and participate with the property owners on a substantive plan amendment. Thank you. And notice them so they can come to hearings like this.
So for the, for clarity in the record, as it relates to the eminent domain powers, the exercise of eminent domain powers in this state, and particularly as it relates to redevelopment, the city has the condemnation power. And that doesn't change whether or not property is inside or outside a redevelopment district. And then how that property moves back and forth. But Mr. Shipman is correct that the pistol amendment and the manner in which condemnation occurs for the purposes of economic development in the state of Nevada is now different than what you're referencing here. So property cannot be condemned and then transferred to a private party for the purposes of economic development any longer. That's against the law in the state of Nevada.
Do you think it's fair to have a plan that doesn't lay that out to the public? Do you think, I mean, is that good policy?
I think it's immaterial when we consider that it's now enumerated in, in the constitution of the state.
Uh huh. And it's not being represented to people that there are eminent domain and transferred to private parties upon government acquisition by anyone in the redevelopment agency?
But that's, that's not allowed any longer.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. Just a couple of things. First is a question for our legal counsel. As we've gone through this, and this is now the second reading, I'll ask the same question I asked last time, which is, have we done things legally, appropriately within the redevelopment agency framework?
For the record, John Shipman, City Attorney's Office, yes.
Okay. And then a question from my colleague, the gentlewoman from Word One. What are the names of the property owners that are coming to you with the concerns that you raised? Who are they?
I'm not going to discuss that, but point of matter.
Hold on a second. Madam Mayor, I think.
I am inquiring if there are property owners who are reading this document and feeling that there's representation of eminent domain.
No, that's not what you said, Ms. Beckus. Hold on. We, only one of us can talk at one time.
Councilwoman Reese.
Okay.
You've indicated that property owners have come to you and they have said, we are concerned that we haven't been noticed. And I want to know what, who, what their names are.
No, no, no one has come to me and said concern about notice. That is not true. But also, I want to correct another fact is, you said this is a second reading, this is a first reading?
No, I'm saying we're going to refer for a second reading today.
Okay.
And so there are no constituents in Word One who have come to you and asked you to examine the redevelopment agency action that's proposed here by this effort.
A question has been posed to me in the last two weeks, if the city has eminent domain powers.
And who posed the question?
I'm not going to answer that question.
Okay, so therein lies the problem, right? There's all these conspiracy theories about what's happening here, and those conspiracy theories are the reason why we end up chasing our tails. And I don't think that's appropriate for a government body, right? This redevelopment agency item, or this item to extend the way that we finance this is so that we don't default on the bond, right? Good governance says we should pay for the debts that we incur, we should have the dollars go to where they are. And that's sort of a principle of fiduciary responsibility and obligation. So extending it, and as I asked Ms. Lochner last time when you were before us, the reason why is so we don't default on the debt obligation.
Correct.
And ultimately, that is the, the point of the action that we take today. And so Ms. Lochner, thank you for your work on this project. I know it can be complicated. I know that the options are not always palatable, no matter how we slice it. My decision today to move for the same action we previously discussed is based on my desire not to see us default. I think that is the reasonable thing to do as a government entity, is to not default on the obligations we have. That's the prudent thing to do. And our lawyers have said that's legally the right thing to do. And so nothing, and being aboard of do-nothings, right? Thank you.
All right. Is there any other questions? Seeing that there are none, I'm going to ask, call for the question since we've been two rounds.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve staff recommendations. And I have determined that the amendments in the plan proposed by the agency are necessary and desirable and move to refer for the second reading and adoption.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Councilwoman Beckus.
Yeah, and, and we're just on E1, correct? Okay. I'm not going to support this. I think that if, if any council members have read this plan in recent time, they would see how outdated it is, and it is the most powerful impacting document for the urban area. It can work very well in concert with other plans and should. I think we would be violating redevelopment law if we heard any abandements on streets like Stevenson, where there is a good argument to be made and someone wants to come forward to make that, if we don't update this plan to match today's dynamics in downtown. And it's very inconsistent for the council to state this is just to pay off debt when we're also entering into and using other redevelopment powers, like the sale of property, like a development and disposition agreement with Jacobs Entertainment. It is absolutely in conflict. And those downtown property owners who weren't around in 1990, whose tax will be siphoned off for the next 15 years, they're watching, they know, they want their services afforded to them, and they were not even noticed to be here.
Okay, thank you.
I will not be supporting this.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Say aye.
Opposed.
All those opposed. Motion carries. Thank you so much. All right, moving on. Madam Clerk.
Item E2, Ordinance Introduction to be read by the city attorney.
All right, going to send it to you, Carl Hall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance Introduction Bill Number 7183, ordinance of the City Council of the City of Reno, amending the redevelopment plan for redevelopment project area number two to authorize the use of tax increment to make interfund loans pursuant to NRS 354.6118 to the downtown project area to facilitate payment of the existing debt together with other matters properly relating thereto.
All right, thank you. Ma'am Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We have none.
All right, thank you very much. Go ahead.
All right, so this is the companion ordinance. So this is for redevelopment project area number two, amending the plan to authorize an interfund loan to redevelopment area number one.
All right, thank you. Have a question. Councilwoman Beckus.
Yeah, I, I have, this is kind of a merging of statute, because we're under NRS 279, the redevelopment laws, and on our second redevelopment area. But we're also using 354. Is that just a, what is that statute?
I believe that one's related to interfund loans.
Interfund loans. Let me ask you this. How routine are interfund loans that we do? Have, have we done one? You've been here, what, four years? Have we ever done another interfund loan?
No, I believe that the NRS got changed because of interfund loans that were made by the City of Reno in the past. And we have not been making interfund loans. In my tenure, we haven't done that, but that doesn't mean that it's not appropriate on certain occasions.
Okay. Because I know sometimes we'll say, we'll use something in the, I mean, we haven't moved just general fund into street fund even?
Sometimes there's some general fund, street fund, where you would front the money Sometimes there's some general fund, street fund, where you would front the money while then you do the assessments later. Sometimes there's some of that, but it's not a formal interfund loan that we've gone through the formal process.
That's why I was asking why now, why this one for an ordinance when in the past we haven't done it for other interfund loans?
Well, this is the only one I've been involved in.
Okay.
And this is the, as far as I know, the process that you should follow to do an interfund loan.
Well, I mean, is it really an interfund loan, or is it to the RDA?
No, it's the RDA.
Oh, no, it's within the RDA. Okay.
RDA Project Area 1 is its own fund.
Okay.
And RDA Project Area 2 has its own fund. We cannot co-mingle the funds.
Okay. I understand. I am comfortable with this, and I've advocated for this, because I think they live and die together, these two, in a way. But I cannot be consistent with my strong emphatic view that the council should have amended this plan in the spirit, and to me, in adherence to the NRS laws without, with extending the life, and to the degree that this is fun money coming back in to RDA 1 to pay bondholders when property owners are not engaged in what really would serve their interests, that I hear all the time about looking at their downtown interests. I just, I won't support this one either, even though it's a fix that I think I came up with the idea originally. So it didn't go hand-in-hand with good policy, in my view. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Thank you, Deborah. We really appreciate it, everything you do. Thank you.
All right, Madam Mayor. We're on item F1 in ordinance adoption for Moya Industrial Complex rezoning.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay, I'm going to send it over to Mr. Carl Hall to read item F1.
Ordinance adoption, ordinance number 6602, case number LDC 21-00051, Moya Industrial Complex rezoning. Request for zoning map amendment from single-family residential, eight units per acre, to industrial. The plus-or-minus 13.31 acre site is located on the northwest side of Moya Boulevard, plus-or-minus 140 feet south of Resource Drive. The subject site has a master plan, land use designation of industrial, together with other matters which pertain to or are necessarily connected therewith, Ward 4.
All right. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, at this time, do you have any public comment on this item?
We have none registered.
All right. I'm going to send it to Councilwoman Weber.
Madam Mayor, can I make a motion, please? I move to adopt ordinance number 6602.
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Okay.
Item F2, ordinance adoption for 3690 Warren Way Zoning Map Amendment.
Okay. I'm going to send it right back to Carl Hall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance adoption, ordinance number 6603, case number LDC 21-00056, 3690 Warren Way Zoning Map Amendment. Request for zoning map amendment from single-family residential, three units per acre, to multifamily residential, 21 units per acre. The plus-or-minus one acre site is generally located on the west side of Warren Way, plus-or-minus 440 feet north of its intersection with West Beckham Lane. The site has a master plan, land use designation of suburban mixed use, together with other matters which pertain to or are necessarily connected therewith, Ward 2.
All right. Thank you so much. Any public comment on this, Madam Clerk?
None registered.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion from council? Seeing that there is none, I'm going to send it to you, Councilwoman Doerr.
Yeah. Thanks. I'd like to move forward with item F2 and approve this zoning map amendment.
All right. Thank you so much. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I'm going to just mention, I did last time, but I just, I so appreciate the landowner, their consultants over at CFA, and our staff for coming up with what I think was a very good approach to this area, zoning the area. So thank you.